Roll call taker, take the roll please.
Alderman Lozara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for February 12th, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. In report and recommendation on Woodside subdivision resurfacing project bid. I'm gonna turn that over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is phase two of our Woodside subdivision project. Last year, as you remember, we did some storm sewer improvements there to help mitigate some flooding. This is a simple grind and overlay of some of the streets there that were rated in our study as needing some work done to them. Robinson Engineering is here if you have any additional questions.
Do you know what streets are actually gonna be resurfaced there?
Yes, Crestwood from Woodside to Spruce, including Crestwood Court. Woodside from Spruce to Oak Meadows, including Woodside Court. And Spruce from Crestwood to the end of the street.
Thank you. Pete?
Kind of a similar question, since it's such a weird area and it's just like a big circle and kinda some offshoots. Everything there is getting done, pretty much. There's nothing that's being left out, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Also, a letter's been sent to the township about that little piece on Second Avenue, correct?
Correct, yes.
That's the only other piece that's there. Everything else is done.
Okay, um, do we need a, a motion on any of this?
Yes, a motion to approve the, the contract. The low bidder was shorter asphalt at $247,439.64.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Lozara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, tree code update in the winter. Anything to add? And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.
Excellent meeting, folks. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Finance and Administration. Let the minute taker note that same members are present. Need a motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation fiscal year 2016 budget. Mr. Wilson, you have the floor. Or is Tammy gonna? You are? Okay. Maybe you wanna give, put some pressure on her or something? No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have before us tonight the first half of the fiscal 16 budget. Per the memo, you know, due to some staffing issues, we're not gonna be touching really on any of the public works items this evening. So we'll do all non-public works items this evening. In advance, we did reshuffle the deck a little bit with the slides to move the public works items out of that order, so we didn't have to kinda thumb through them. So the slides will be, some of the slides won't be there tonight as we're going through them, like Public Works Administration, Streets, those have all been moved further back. So you just have to kinda tab through those when we get to that part. Short of that, you know, I guess unless there's any questions before we begin, we'll just get right into it. Sure, so, a little bit of a housekeeping background information as we've done in the past. You know, we have the different fund types this year. There's a new one proposed in the budget, which why it still says five, because it hasn't been approved yet. The Internal Service Fund, which we'll get to in the March meeting, that kinda replaces the Equipment Replacement Fund. You've seen a few notations through there regarding the sinking fund and some different funding levels. But we'll get to that one, the second, second budget meeting. Otherwise, the General Fund, we all know what that is. Special Revenue Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, Motor Fuel Tax, Narcotics Forfeiture, the Capital Projects Funds, Water and Sewer Capital Project, General Capital Projects, Land Acquisition, Enterprise Funds, Sanitation, Community Parking Lot, Water Sewer. And then the trusted agency is the Police Pension Fund and the Special Service Area Funds. Can just refresher, you know, this has been in the last three or four budgets, the different fund balance categories. By and large, the General Fund's really the only one that has anything other than just one category. Just kinda a refresher of what the, the phraseologies are as we're going through them. So with the elimination of the Equipment Replacement Fund, replacement with the SURF Fund, we're still at 14 funds this year. We're 50-50 split between funds that have a proposed increase in the fund balance and those that have a decrease in the fund balance. Capital spending, we went over the CAP a month, month and a half ago. It's increased for the last five years. It's relatively flat again this year versus last year. Exclusive of the completion of the treatment plant and the safety improvements at Irving Park and Wooddale Road. Those did, you know, spike the levels a little bit, but those are kinda one-time projects. We took those out of, out of that mix. So the process, again, as we've done the last few years, as we'll go, each department in the budget binder has its own tab, narrative, budget sheets, and if there's any expanded level items, the green is manager recommended, the red slash pink is manager denied. You will notice there are no pink sheets in the budget book this year. All 10, uh, rec, uh, expanded level items were recommended by the manager this year, which I think is the first time we've had no pink sheets since we've been doing that process, so. Okay. So that's exciting. There's two golden rod pages in the budget book. Those are just informational sheets. There's one in the SURF tab explaining the new vehicle replacement methodology that the garage and public works is using. And there's one on the Capital Projects page explaining the changes that were made to those numbers after the CAP meeting from a month, month and a half ago. So after that, you know, we'll go through a quick overview of the entire budget, and then we'll get into, you know, those items in order. The bottom bullet there, as I mentioned, today we'll get through, or attempt to get through all the non-public works items on March 12th. We'll get through any public works items and any residual items from this evening that may still be hanging out there. If there's any questions, follow-ups, things of that nature. So the big picture, you can see the fiscal 15 budget versus the fiscal 16 proposed budget on revenues is only down about half a million. The projected number in the middle there is down to 10 million. That's purely due to the safety improvements not being completed this year, that $10 million grant funding that we have there didn't come through this year, obviously, because the project wasn't completed. So that's why there's that dip there. And then the corollary dip functionally in the expenditure side of the ledger as well. And then the expenditures are down in the fiscal 16 proposed versus the 15 budget due to the treatment plant project effectively coming to completion in the early part of the fiscal year. Last year, there was a significantly larger amount of that accounted for in the budget as we're going into it. On the slides, as we're going through, just as has been in the past, unless there's a note, salaries are up due to, you know, collective bargaining agreements, you know, city resolutions, ordinances, FICA. And IMRF FICA, again, as I'm sure you all know, didn't, did not change this year. Our IMRF rate did go down. I think this is the third or fourth year in a row where IMRF rate has gone down after it did spike back up after the losses that they took in '08. So that's good. And then we do have some, some reasoning for some of the, the more significant changes on the different slides in the deck. You know, typically, if it was above a 10% change, we put some note in there. If it changed by one or 2%, didn't really put a lot of causation notes on there. But then whatever's listed is not an exhaustive list, you know, so we might have put commodities changed due to fuel, you know, building maintenance might have changed by a couple hundred dollars as well, but it didn't, didn't seem to be a significant factor in the, in the change of that number. And then just, you know, as we go through, ask questions and, you know, so we'll try to get through it all. So we're into the General Fund now. As currently presented, the General Fund is estimated in this year with approximately a $784,000 surplus, largely due to higher-than-expected revenues and lower expenses within virtually every category of the General Fund. If you look through some of the summary sheets in there, you know, a lot of the summary categories were down. You know, personnel, especially those, some attritions, some vacancies, and then like the IMRF rate going down as well, so.
You're going to, $783,000 surplus?
Hmm?
That's including, that's saying that all the interfund transfers went through, including the $688,000 from the Water and Sewer Fund, correct?
That is correct.
I know we had a lot of discussion a few weeks ago about gambling money and stuff like that. So if we took 300, 350,000 of that surplus, we'd still have 400, 400, 450,000 to that number. And put the 350,000 or 300,000 back to the Water and Sewer Fund. This way, when we have to discuss next year's increases, the sewer and water, there's some extra money there. Is that correct?
Correct. See, if...
Of course, you need a motion.
Yeah, and just functionally, the transfers have been made and booked, but we're still within the fiscal year. So if there was that direction from the dais, we would just unwind it, you know, reverse the entry, move the money back. And, you know, just, you know, have to explain to the auditors why we didn't make it, but that's a pretty easy explanation, so, you know, just...
Well, again, we're looking to...
Correct.
Spread the remaining $3. We'd say on the water, water rate, but it's really for the sewer plan.
Hmm?
So whether you raise the water rate, the sewer, the fixed cost, it's still $3 unless we find other ways. And by doing this, we've got the other building going up finally on Wooddale Road, and I have a few other things going up that could help minimize all the increases. But again, we need a motion.
I'd like to make that motion. Of putting... Go ahead.
How much?
Well, I'll take your advice of the 350,000 to put into the water fund.
What I said was, instead of, we have, we end up with a surplus in the General. So we were discussing ways, when we talked about this budget plan, we might be able to find some money that could lead in the water. We have the interfund transfer every year of 688, which is in this year's budget as well. Being that our General Fund had almost 800,000 to the good, if we take 350, you know, subsidize a little bit of the increase for next year. I mean, instead of doing it in maybe over the next two years, maybe over four years, or depending how the construction goes and town and businesses sell, sale of water, maybe don't even need it before we bring out. But it's a good discussion that can be...
So every year we transfer how much?
688,000 from the water. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, thanks. It's a reimbursement transfer back to the General Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund for salaries, overhead depreciation, phones, you know, things of that nature. And the conversation, you know, as you're aware, the last couple of weeks was how do we, you know, mitigate some of the costs of the water fund to help try to lengthen the amount of time to, to smooth or possibly not have to increase other ways?
I remember the conversation, but I also remembered like five people up here adding projects, well, through the job. So my, my concern is, and, and the water's definitely an issue, but I think with the, with the memory care center coming on, that big building, that's gonna be a big help. How much does that, what, what does that amount of money do supposedly or projectedly to the, to the water rate if, if, if we do that 350,000?
And that, before you answer, Brad? All the projects that were put into the CAP are in this budget, correct, Brad?
Correct.
So as far as the budget, I mean, if we were to approve this budget just the way it stood...
I'll take that.
We're not taking that motion. We have a $42,000 surplus.
Sorry. $42,000 surplus.
In the General Fund, correct?
Right. Being that we ended up with an extra 800,000 in our General Fund, we're not taking any, any projects out of this new budget. We're just, instead of making that 688,000, if we take 350, we're only gonna transfer 338,000. And by basically 350,000, that is really, if we were gonna raise it another dollar, let's say we're gonna change it over a three-year period, the $3, that 350,000 really equates to almost 75 cents, 80, 80 cents? Mr. Wilson, I don't know.
Between 70 and 75.
70 to 75 cents. So our increase then, if we wanted to, could only be 25 cents, depending. I mean, again, you have to look at all the numbers.
So 350,000 divided by the millions of gallons that we use?
Yeah, it's a...
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
What's the savings per, per household, I guess, so?
But it's currently about, the rate modification is approximately 20 cents per 100,000 of revenue. So for every $100,000 of additional revenue you would need to generate, the rate would need to increase commensurately by approximately 20 cents.
I'm lost.
Yeah, to, so we need to, you know, say you need...
What I'm trying to figure out is what, what does the $350,000 get us? Does that reduce their water bill by 20 cents per thousand gallons?
No, it's like 60 cents. 60 to 75 somewhere.
Yeah, it'd be 60, yeah, yeah, just in a, in a vacuum, it'd be 60 to 70 cents.
Well, it would not reduce, hold on. Let's, let's clarify. It's not gonna reduce the water.
So effectively, the, by, by doing this and some other, yeah, it would slow it down, and I guess the, the best answer would be time. It would, it would, it would add time to the, to the, to the clock for those rate increases to let memory care come online, to let something else perhaps...
But this would be like a $3 a month, if in my head, I'm doing the math correctly, $3 a month per household projected savings or easing?
To, yeah, to, to stretch it out, correct, yeah.
Right, and it doesn't do anything to the, this new budget?
See, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect this document here, it'll affect the bottom line of the fiscal year we're in right now, which, based on the projections, 785,000 or 430,000, it's still gonna wind up a very healthy year for the city and the General Fund.
It's still an increase of 430,000 to the General Fund.
Correct, yeah. And then also helping the water fund augment and stretch that, that timeline out.
I mean, I was just trying to make sure it was actually gonna be something noticeable. We're gonna go through all the calculations, and somebody saves 10 cents, then it wasn't worth it, so.
Yeah, it's more like 60 cents. But again, we're gonna have to look at it come December, we'll be looking at it, you know? Because how long, when does the treatment plant start? Is it a year after it's completed or six months? I think it was six months. Somebody said a year, but I thought it was six months.
Well, the, the initial interest payments due six months after the treatment plant's time. But the way the, the schedules work out, it's a year, year and a half before there's a significant chunk of the debt service that, that gets paid back. So the initial payment's six months, but the number's pretty nominal. It's a year, year and a half when you start to see some pretty significant numbers start to hit the books.
And like this, we get a little time, because it's gonna be 18 months for the other bright oaks to come online and collect all those fees. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
And how do we feel, I mean, I know there's a lot of noise out there and rumbling about different revenue streams maybe being reduced or dried out as far as local government distributive funds and... How is that all gonna come into play should those things happen? I mean, we don't know what they are. It could, could be a 3% reduction, it could be a...
I can speak a little bit on, you're talking about the LGDF, the income tax. Everybody's heard the governor, we could lose 50% of our, our LGDF. That 50% is about 700,000, Brad, 720? Maybe 680? Between 680 and 720, depending.
It's a little high, but yeah.
Okay. If that happens, then as far as the budget goes, I mean, that would be a significant impact. You know, there's a couple of projects that we can hold off. I mean, number one, the windows, there's 350,000. You know what?
The poor windows.
No, but...
I knew they'd never get done.
No, but you know what?
You're a naysayer.
No, 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 but there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and you know, you hear a lot of different things coming out of Springfield right now, and there's a lot of political posturing, whatever's going on down there. Some feel that we're actually, we will receive the money and some, you know, again, that's, I under, you know, I understand what you're saying.
I'm of the school that thinks that we're going to get the money, but...
Oh, yeah, I, I'm always like to be cautious.
I'm a little apprehensive of, so part of my question is, do we have to move, make that decision to move that money today? You know, can't we wait two months or three months to see kinda what some of the political landscape's gonna be to move it?
Well, it could take, it could take a year before these guys make up their mind.
Well, I'm not saying wait till they take up their mind, but certainly a couple more months is gonna give us a better view of what's, what's coming down the pipe.
Either way, I mean, we have 783,000. We take 350, we're still leaving 430,000. So if, if they take away 50%, it's 7, 700, let's say 700,000 for easy numbers. We still have 430,000 to the good. We have to make up the other 280,000 now. I'm sure there's a couple little things, projects, that could maybe wait till the next budget year to see what's going on, if need be. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, kind of corollary to that is that that decision, the decision on the, the water transfer technically is independent of whatever happens with LGDF, because one is dealing with the current fiscal year and one is dealing with the next fiscal year. Just from a carryover standpoint and a fund balance standpoint, liquidity standpoint, you are correct. Just from a pure budgeting standpoint, because the state's fiscal year's July 1st, so this, they wouldn't, there's not really a nexus budgetarily between the two of them, but from a liquidity standpoint, there is, but not a, not a budget standpoint.
Alderman Jacob, you were next. Go ahead.
What, when is this transfer typically made? At 688,000, when is that done at?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, typically, we do half of it in October at the six-month mark, and then we do the other half of it around February, sort of around now, actually. And the reason we do it not in the 12th period is just in case, you know, just for bookkeeping purposes, we don't wanna do it right at the end of the fiscal year, because then we're out of time. So we do it a month or two before the end of the year, so.
You have a follow-up?
Um, so if we, let's say we did, and that's for fiscal year 2015, so that's for, so we would be doing that now. So next year, I mean, we could still do that transfer if we have to.
No, that's, next, next, if you look at, in the budget, there is another transfer for 688,000. But if you stop that transfer, let's say you do 350,000 and you, you, less, then this budget is not 42,000 to the positive, it's now 310,000 to the negative. That's why.
Okay, so it's just for this year? That's what I'm trying to, just for the 2015?
It's got nothing to do with this new budget.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to make sure of, it doesn't affect this new budget at all, just for 2015.
Yeah, the motion that's on the floor only affects 2015. It doesn't touch the...
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a first and a second. Anything else? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So the 780,000 that's a surplus is not, none of that number is in this budget? Did you just say that?
Mr. Wilson?
The, the fund balance number rolls forward, rolls through.
What, what hasn't?
Correct, because the year's, yeah, not over yet, yeah. But it, but the, the budget, the fiscal 16 budget was built independently, like, that 748,000 isn't somehow added to the revenues of this, it, that 784 isn't, wasn't used to balance the fiscal 16 budget.
Right, so after we transfer the, what number are you asking for? 350?
The 350.
350, and we have what, 230 left?
No.
That will...
No, 4, 430. 433. 433, 844 would be the, the surplus.
350 from 780?
Wait, oh, the, oh, the variance is 70, I'm sorry, I was looking at the middle number.
I was gonna say, I went to a different math class.
No, 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 I was...
Yeah, so, Nick will be proud of me. So, of course, he hit the wrong button. So the, the 350 will come off of that 784.
Okay.
And just change that number, which will then, you know, change those numbers, but this number here will stay untouched. That number will remain the same.
How is, how is that? Why, why is that?
Because there are two different set of accounting cycles for two different years.
What happens to those dollars? If the, the 350 exists and moved into this year, how come?
The, the fund balance will change.
Right, the starting balance for next year's...
The starting balance will change, the reserve balance will change. But that's, that's just an independent number from the, the estimated revenues minus estimated expenses.
So this will go to the reserve balance?
Correct, yeah, so the reserve...
But it does go somewhere?
It does go, correct, yeah.
Then just disappear and it went to 280, 42,000?
Yeah, so the reserve balance in the General Fund, instead of increasing by 784, would increase by 434. Does that make sense?
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Okay, I was just, just make sure we're good.
Does it make sense? Different question, but I understand.
I guess my question is, if it's not gonna affect next year's budget, why don't we do like 500,000? If it's not affecting next year's budget at all, let's help out the residents even more and make it a little bit bigger. Is there a reason we wouldn't wanna do that?
Well, don't forget, you know, state of Illinois, they're talking 50%. Like I said, some people say they won't touch it at all, some people say they will touch it, some, and some people are saying, well, you might split it in the middle and take 25%, which would cost us 350. And then we would have the 350. Before you take out the windows. So... Just, just to be cautious, I mean, and again, the discussion's gonna be had when the time comes, because everybody knows we do have $3 that we have to make up. So the goal was, when we were discussing it even a couple of months ago, was, well, split it over two years, three years, I heard even as high as six years. Well, the only way we're gonna do that is if we, you know, we have the surplus, as you see, the first project that came out of the box for next year's, the Woodside's gonna be in next year's budget, correct? It's for this budget?
Correct.
Was that taken in consideration?
No.
Okay, so there was what, 50,000, I think, under budget?
A little more than that.
Okay, so there's another 50,000 already, again. Again, it's just, we were talking about it, I know the chairman of Finance is telling me that he was talking to Brad, they were gonna do some things. I was looking in here and I'm, I called him up, I'm like, okay, what do we do? I mean, we've still got that transfer, you got all the money. He goes, well, if we don't transfer it all, then you don't have this increase. But go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
I guess historically, it was 688,000. Where did that number come from? Did someone just make that up at some point, just sitting up here?
No, no, that, that is for, Mr. Wilson, his staff, to cover expenses.
Yeah, because the, the, the concept behind, well, the concept of an enterprise fund is that it could be spun off and operated as its own business. So theoretically, we could sell the water system and it would be its own, its own entity, its own business. And there's, there's two different methodologies to track some of the time, like accounts payable, my time, manager's time, things of that nature, is you can either account for it in an admin budget within the water fund or an enterprise fund, or you can do a reimbursement transfer. The reimbursement transfer, just from a bookkeeping standpoint, to be perfectly honest, is significantly easier and less taxing on everybody to do it that way. So we go through and, you know, there's an analysis done on, you know, the percentage of my time, percentage of accounts payable's time, a percentage of Tammy's time, percentage of manager's time, percentage of the billing department's time, and all those, those costs are added up and come up with that cost of 688, you know, telephones, you know, overhead depreciation. know, overhead depreciation of the building, heating costs, you know, things of that nature, they're all, all lumped into that number.
And looking at page three here, where it says, not on that spreadsheet, but in our books, eighty-four point two-nine, or just over ten months, is what we would have if we kept it the way it is with the seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is up from the seventy-seven and a half, just over nine months. So we're pretty close at ten months with just the three fifty still in reserve, which is a healthy reserve. Right, Brad?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure my numbers are right.
Yeah, GFO recommends fifteen percent.
Yeah, well, that's crazy, that's ridiculous. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, I guess.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
He's thinking.
This is just for the one year?
Yeah, yeah, no, this is, there's no way.
Yes.
It's only for the one year, and that's it. I mean, if we come to this point next year and we have another eight hundred thousand, well, that could be discussed again, but.
It's atypical, abnormal that we have seven hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Right, right, that's, right, that's.
And that's part of my concern, that we don't get in the habit of, now we gotta come up with a check every year for three hundred, four hundred thousand.
It's, it's already in the budget for the transfer of six eighty-eight.
To offset the expense, but the expense was figured to make, pay the bills or to offset the income, then we'd have to come up with that.
Right, no, it's a one-time, this year, well, actually, for this fiscal year, it's not, has nothing to do with this new budget.
So we're just gonna push the cost down the road one year?
Well, really, we've paid everything.
No, 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 but the, if the rate goes up, right?
Right.
And it has to go up to cover the bills, and we put this money in to offset that raise, if you don't pay it the next year, that raise is gonna kick in the following year. Am I correct?
What raise, are we talking about, are we talking about the increase in the water or their fees?
No, the increase in the water, right? That's why we're moving to three fifty.
Right, well, we, we know it's three dollars, we know we need three dollars. If, if we were to go by what the study was, it was three dollars, correct, Brad? Okay.
Right.
So for us to space the three dollars, you know, we do the three fifty, that's basically about six, let's say sixty cents, make it simple, let's not go to seventy, sixty cents. So this year, we raised fifty cents ourselves to try and, so next year, we might only take thirty cents or twenty cents, or.
But where you're losing me, if we actually need the three dollars, and the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment's not there the following year, do we not need the income or increase to then still pay the bills? If you still need a fixed number of three dollars?
Right, but our.
Buying it down for one year with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in year two, don't we have to make up that amount?
Well, that's our, our goal was.
Year two through three, four, five, whatever the number is. Am I correct, or am I not thinking this correctly?
No, you are, you are correct, I mean, you'd still, still to get to that number, they said the overarching concept is that hopefully there'll be other, other projects, other utilization.
All right, so as long as we're agreed, that's, we're buying one year.
We're buying time, that's it, that's, that's all, that's all we're doing here, was, we're, you never know, let's face it, we get Bright Oaks, something happens at Thorndale, somebody's putting up a building.
Right, and Bright Oaks should make a big dent.
Well, yeah, Bright Oaks might be, because I, I ask those questions, and could only be like a hundred thousand extra, but a hundred thousand's a hundred thousand. Could be more, could be, you know, a little more, a little less, but for us to buy a little time, this is one way, you know, so.
No, no, I'm good, just wanted everybody to be clear.
All right, we're okay on that, Brad, you'll make that change.
Yes, yeah, we're good, we, I think we all have it noted, so. All right, so, yeah, no, you're fine. So going into the, the high-level revenues of the general fund, you see the, the taxes, line items up nominally, again, due to increased sales tax, sales taxes continued to recover pretty favorably over the last few years for the city. You know, technically, you know, based on the IML projections, income taxes due to be up a couple of dollars per capita this year, exclusive of any budgetary deals that may be occurring in Springfield. And then utility taxes remain strong and continue to increase a little bit. Telecom tax over the last few years has been on the decline. There is a push within IGFO and some other organizations to modernize the telecom taxation language, because it's, it's pretty arcane at this point. So that's, I guess, a work in progress, and Tammy was on a conference call, trying to get a better grip of what's going on with that, and it's kind of a mess, it sounds like, so, but we do have some people working on that, you know, with the state right now. License and permits, again, the Bright Oaks permit, I know we did, we've stretched that out over a couple of years, which actually, just from a revenue flow standpoint, has worked out nicely, because we're able to, to budget that in over, over the course of a few years, especially in the water fund, that's helped out too, again, and increased revenues over a longer period of time to, to buy some time and liquidity in that fund. Charges for service, cable franchise fees, that's, you know, kind of fully realized now after the first couple of years with AT&amp;T, and then the new franchise agreement with Comcast that we completed a year and a half, two years ago. Investment income, the biggest thing in there is there's been a change in the accounting for the city's investments, you know, driven by auditing standards, that's really where that has come from. Miscellaneous is down due to the removal of most auction proceeds, and again, we'll get to that when we get to the SURF fund, but a good friend, Alderman E. Wesley, has always argued that the auction proceeds from the vehicles should go where the vehicles are bought out of, and in this budget, with the SURF fund being created, that will be the case now, going forward. And then the inter-fund, again, is due to the, a slight increase due to the tourism transfer, which is driven by the Prairie Fest and the cost for the Prairie Fest, especially this year being a different site, expected to be some, some slightly additional costs, higher costs, particularly on the police side and the public work side.
Alderman Jacob.
Quick questions on licenses and permits. The budget was seven thirty-three, four, and we're estimating eight forty-five, seven fifty, that's, that's because of Bright Oaks, right?
Correct.
And then for, proposed for 2016 is eight forty-four, that's Bright Oaks again, but shall we even increase that, I mean, with Elgin O'Hare and everything else increasing and, and other projects, they're gonna probably start to happen, shall we increase it a little bit?
Yeah, we've, we contemplated that, and I, I guess, you know, our cautionary tale to that is this Bright Oaks building has been being built now, Mr. Forrest, for what is it, five years ago it's gonna be built, originally? And so not knowing, you know, not having kind of, you know, a bird in the hand scenario, once it gets going and a little more regularity to it, we would probably want to do that, but not knowing, you know, the timing of what's gonna come in and when permit fees are gonna be due, we didn't really want to over-leverage ourselves in that regard, and then especially, like I said, with that, that building, two, three, four years in a row, was gonna be built, gonna be built, gonna be built, eventually, we just took it out of the, the revenue forecast, because we, we didn't know when it was gonna come in, so.
And Brad, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Alderman Sizmarzki, since he's finance here. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving over to the expense side, you know, personnel only being up one percent this year, it's a pretty significant number. As I mentioned, IMR freight went down, there was a consolidation of the two positions in the one in the admin department, kind of really the, the biggest savings was in the police department, there's some attrition in the police department, so replacing some top-of-the-range officers with some bottom-of-the-range officers, that really helped the police department's numbers this year. So it can't be counted on every year, but, you know, for this year, it worked out very nicely. Contractuals down largely due to engineering costs out of the admin department, the civil engineering costs. And then everything else, pretty nominal either way. The inter-fund transfer is up due to the transfer to the SURF fund the first year, but again, there'll be a deeper conversation about that in the March meeting. So unless there's any other high-level questions on the general fund, we'll move into the admin department, which this year, you know, the manager, I think, has the largest decrease of any operating department in the budget, so, you know, on the personnel side, as noted there, going from the five full-time equivalents down to the four, and then the contractual is the reduction of the civil engineering costs, and then the commodities, fuel and office supply costs were driving those numbers lower. So, you know, at this point, you know, before we move on to another department, just to make sure there's no questions on the particular department, that way we're not flipping back and forth, so, look for some nominal consensus on each department as we're going through.
Talking about just the admin right now, right?
Correct.
That was pretty kind of.
City clerk, you know, another department that's down a little bit. The contractual due to the codifier fees, you know, when we pass an ordinance, we have to send to the codifier to put on the, the city's website, the city code, a couple of years ago, that number got pretty high due to the unified development ordinance that we had to book through, but now, don't have anything of that magnitude going through anymore at this point. I think the form-based code in the overlay district, the Elgin O'Hare, Thorndale area, drove that number up pretty significantly as well, so, kind of down to what we would consider a more normalized level at this point. And then other just miscellaneous expenses are down in the clerk's office this budget year as well. Community Development Department, you know, one note, I think it was noted in the narrative, there is one expanded level item, personnel inspector. If that item were not to be included in this budget, the building department, community development department would have had a decreased budget year over year as well, so we've been three for three right out of the box. So really, the, the big discussion point here is personnel, the inspector, which I believe is the next page. One, one item of note is depending how that conversation goes, there may be a need to go back and look at the contractual services line item, you know, due to some services that the building department would need to farm out, should that inspector position not be filled. So, the next page.
Mayor.
And then, I think we're on the, probably somebody's, any other questions, probably move on to the discussion on the inspector, do you have any other question?
Well, that was it, though, it's gonna.
Okay.
As far as the, the new inspector, I mean, I know we have a couple, we have one new inspector and I believe the other gentleman is part-time, is that correct?
Yeah, well, I'll defer to Mr. Forrest for questions on this one. I mean, you know, we, we do have the, the building inspector, who's been here a number of years, and then the, the zoning inspector is part-time, and he does like to run housing, a couple of other things, and then the, the code enforcement officer is full-time, but that's not a, I think that's germane to what we're discussing here, so. I'll defer to Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, the existing staffing level that, that you're talking about, the code enforcement officer, that employee replaced another employee who left for another position, so that was no increase.
Right.
In staff. This new inspector position would be an increase in staff. It's something we've needed for a couple of years, it's something that, moving forward, particularly with the memory care and with the level of service that has been talked about lately, we're gonna need another presence out in the field to do inspections. We're working with the fire district right now to get an inspectional program together to get into all the existing buildings, again, that's gonna be time-consuming, so the need is there, the need was identified in the staffing study.
I have a follow-up. I know, I forget who I was speaking with as far as, pardon me? Oh, you didn't call me?
No, no, go ahead. Sorry.
I thought you said mayor.
No, no, I did say.
Okay. There was some discussion about this position also possibly working on some Saturdays on occasion, is that true? I know, I heard a rumor.
That's the code. That's, we've actually started a proactive flexing of hours with the code enforcement position, not this position, although we probably could do this a little with this position as well, where we went to our new code enforcement officer, asked him in the springtime and in the summertime, maybe work a Saturday here or an evening here, and kind of observe things that may not be happening during the course of normal business hours. Let's face it, who's, who's breaking the rules right in front of everybody, so.
That's starting in March?
Yeah, that starts March first and goes all the way through, I think, September first to October first.
Yeah, okay, well, it sounded like a real nice idea, I just wanted to see if it was true, because.
It's true.
This'll stop some of the weekend warrior construction crews. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that this is something that building departments needed for a while, I mean, we haven't been up on the fire inspection, inspections for businesses, the apartments, the, the weekend stuff, I mean, we, we've been shorthanded for, for quite a while, so.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, like Mr. Forrest stated, in conjunction with this, we've met with the fire district already, and they are also stepping up their staffing plan, and they're gonna work together with us on this, so it's not just us stepping this up, they will be stepping it up, and we've been kind of coordinating with them already, anticipating getting an extra body and working with them, so.
Alderman Jacob.
Being what Alderman Woods had said, that we have been short-staffed for a while, which I agree with, is one person, is that gonna do it, or are we gonna be asking for a half a person six months from now, or another person six months from now, or will one person suffice for this?
Mr. Woods?
I think the, the plan of attack is, after meeting with the fire district, get this going, we think this'll be enough for now, have them step up their manning power, have us step up our manning power, clear the backlog, and then reevaluate after a year's time, but certainly, this is definitely enough to get us started. We don't want to jump the gun and hire more people if we don't need it.
Mayor. So, everybody we have down there stays, whether it's part-time or full-time, and then this'll be one new full-time position, correct? So it's, okay. It's not like we're taking the part-timer and making them, that's perfect, okay, good. Mr. Catalano?
How far are we on the backlog inspections?
Several years ago, we were, when we had a couple of part-time fire inspectors working, we had, we were able to inspect every industrial and commercial occupancy annually. Since there have been personnel changes and a decrease in the staff size, there have probably been several buildings that have not been inspected in three or four years or possibly even longer.
Wow.
So, and, you know, again, if you.
Yeah, we need, so this is.
Issue too, I mean, we need to get this done.
Well, yeah, it's, it's not only a safety issue, but it's also about, if we get these inspectors in the buildings, they're able to identify work that may have been done without a permit, so in the long run, it's also gonna be generating revenues and, you know, the bottom line is, is life safety issues.
Okay.
Jacob?
Just a quick question, are we gonna make motion on all these or just at the very end?
Yeah, yeah.
For all these added items I'm talking about.
I would make the motion. Sorry, Mike. Forrest.
Yeah, one by one, so before we move on, let's get a motion to either deny or approve.
Okay, with that, I would make the motion to approve the extra person.
I'll second.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And so, unless there's any other questions with the Building Department, we'll move on to the Finance Department. Really, the only thing of note in the Finance Department this budget year is the part-time admin assistant. As you are all aware, was converted into a full-time position. That's the reason for the increase in the personnel category, than that everything remains the same in the Finance Department budget. Legal, legal kind of speaks for itself. You know, it's, you know, Bond Dixon Associates, and then any labor-related work through Shermello and Romelo and Durkin. You know, just every year, you know, seems to be some, you know, nominal increase in the hours that they work on different projects going on, whatever else. So, that's reflected there in that number. Police Department, you know, the big number, obviously, in the Police Department is that capital outlay number, the increase of 50,000. Before I get to that, well, with the, I hate to sound like a broken record here, but with the creation of the SURF Fund, the sinking fund for the vehicles, there was other equipment replacement items in that equipment replacement fund, most prominently the Police Department equipment, which, due to that fund being closed, those replacements got moved back into the operating departments. That's why there was that spike in the operating department budget this year. It's nothing that the chief did. Just to the closing of the one fund, we had to restructure where those purchases came out of. Just from a budgetary standpoint, pure budgetary standpoint, those purchases were funded originally by a transfer from the General Fund. So, moving them into the operating department and then eliminating that transfer from the General Fund, just from a budgetary dollar cent standpoint, was a net zero. It's just the presentation at the end of the day. So, absent moving those capital outlay items back into the operating department, the Police Department this year would have had a negative budget year over year. Again, largely driven by the personnel and then the commodities costs decreasing as well. All that being said, there are two expanded level items in the Police Department, the Bike Patrol and Crime Analysis Software. So, unless there's other questions globally about the Police Department, we'll move into the Bike Patrol.
Peter?
Seeing that I kind of talked about this Bike Patrol and really pushed for this, I'd like to make motion to approve the Bike Patrol.
And I'll second that.
Alderman Lozara?
Do we know how many bikes you're saying? It's just two bikes?
Yes, it is for two bikes. The bikes are about $800, $800 to $900 apiece. That would also include some equipment for those bikes, uniform equipment, bike helmets, stuff like that, to get two bicycle units up and running, and the training to do that for the first year.
So, after this, are we planning on putting any more, or do we think just two is enough?
I think two's a good start. We have an interest from four to six people that wanna be involved in it right now. Initially, if this gets approved, we would look to send two people at one time to training. It's a week-long training for the class. So, only having two bikes, we can only send two at a time. Then later in the summer, hopefully send two more, and then see where we're at, you know, after a year or two, and then reevaluate if we need to do any more.
Yeah, many of the residents in the Georgetown houses, they're, you know, they're asking about the patrol. How's it gonna be handled as far as, you know, schedule throughout the whole city, or?
Chief?
What we would do is look at our manpower on any given day, and we do this with special units, where we'll do sometimes undercover work or special patrol work. We'll look at days when we're above the minimum staffing and people that are trained to ride the bikes, and then we'll schedule them. Sometimes it might be for two hours at a time. Sometimes it might be for a four or six-hour period of shift. And then what our plan is to do is have it throughout the town, not just one area town. You know, there's some areas that will have opportunity for a lot more contact with residents. But, you know, even the neighborhoods up north or down the southeast, there's opportunities to make contact with residents, so...
I thought when we talked about this, that logistically, this didn't lend itself to working out for us. I thought that was where our discussion was.
Chief?
Could you clarify as to working out for it?
Well, as far as what we're gonna get, how many hours these guys would work on a patrol, if they were needed for a call, how they would make it from a Bike Patrol to a car type of thing. You know, given the number of officers and the shifts and how we're set up, I thought that just the logistics of personnel shifts, equipment, things that may or may not come up. So, pursuit, if you got two guys on bikes, how do they get to a car? How do they get to where they're going? That type of thing. Chief?
Two parts to that. One is, this includes the cost of two bike racks that would fit on the back of our squads. So, if we were in a certain area, we could, you know, go to the car and deploy from that area, too, if it was across town. Another thing in talking to other agencies, they said what they've frequently seen is, the Bike Patrols are actually sometimes able to beat the Squad Patrols. So, what we would do is, you know, if we've got, let's say, four or five guys on a Friday night, and it's starting to get busy, and, you know, a couple guys are down on arrest, and things are, you can kind of see the trends going throughout the night. At that point, you'd maybe pull them off for a little while, and they'd be in their car driving around and responding to calls. So, it's gonna kind of be a fluid situation, but we do it, handle it similar to how we handle foot patrols now. There's times that, you know, we'll go do a foot patrol, and you could be, you know, a good two, three-minute run away from your car. But as you start to hear calls picking up, you start heading back to your car. So, it'd kind of be a flexible thing in the beginning to learn what works for us, but I think we can make it work.
Follow?
So, how many hours do you anticipate? I'm sure you thought about it a little bit, that you would have patrol. I mean, you can't guarantee it, obviously, but, and putting together your thought process, how many hours do you think that you'd be able to put guys on bikes, assuming we had two guys? How many man-hours do you think we'd?
I would say conservatively, we could do about eight to 10 hours a week, that we could have time that guys are out on the bikes in the neighborhoods doing patrol. There's classes that start in early May, and preparing for that, we have a spot in case it's approved. So, we, if this does get approved, we don't come and go up. We can't do it this summer 'cause all the classes are full. So, we've saved a spot that costs us no money, unless we commit to doing it. And then we would look to go to those classes in early May, and then we could roll the program out by mid-May and start, you know, during the warm months, getting the guys out there, so...
So, this question's more to the Aldermen that I know that wanted this, a couple. And it's a good idea. I'm just looking at the value we get. And so, you know, is the reality gonna match the expectation? So, if it's eight hours a week, I mean, that's like an hour a day. Obviously, it could be four hours one day, two hours another day, but does that kind of match up to what you guys were looking for?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I just want, you know, I mean, I still have a lot of residents that say they don't really see the police. This kind of gets them in the community. And even if he does two, you know, two hours a week in each ward or whatever, I mean, and he, you know, the more presence, the better. So, I think it's gonna work.
And I was just trying to be conservative with that. You know, late May to September time, you know, it'll depend on training and, you know, available officers. I think that'll be a conservative number. Hopefully, we can exceed that. But I don't wanna say we're gonna do 40 hours a week, 'cause I don't think the first year, that's really realistic, until we get everyone trained out there doing it.
Chief, do you really think that a car going down the street and a bicycle going down the street makes a big difference? I mean, we don't have, we don't have big businesses or stuff off the main streets that we have. And the other question is, what about insurance on whether riding the bike instead of in the car protection?
Well, as far as a street or a car versus a bike going down the road, I'm a big believer in community contact. That's why we do foot patrols. It's that face-to-face, one-on-one interaction. We certainly encourage it when they're driving in the car. But sometimes when they're driving in the car, we don't know whether they're going to a call, and, you know, they're focusing on what they're going to, and it might not be lights and siren, but they might be going to a call. It's increasing the contact that we see through everything we do, through coffee with a cop to CPA to, it's just increasing those contacts and, you know, knowing the community and them knowing us. It's kind of a two-way street. And insurance, I'll defer to Brad on that.
Sure. Insurance, we've reached out kind of in a casual sense. You know, and the big question is, you know, where are they gonna be riding these bikes? Where's the exposure? And, you know, it sounds like in talking to the chief, maybe like industrial park and then some neighborhoods. So, it doesn't sound like anybody riding the bikes like on Irving Park or specifically like on Addison Road or whatever. So, those are slower vehicles, you know.
Doesn't take much to knock someone off a bike, though.
Sure, sure. So, you know, there's some exposure there, but it's not, doesn't sound, especially for the amount of time that we're anticipating, not a real significant change in the policy terms.
Mayor?
Not to get off the subject, Chief, but there were some Mares and Managers that were talking about, one of the Police Departments on occasion does roll call out on the street, where the officers are all standing there, and neighbors start coming out, and they start talking, and they start interacting. I'll get you the town that did that. You might already know.
I'm aware of that, and we've already, we just talked about that in December at one of our CLP meetings about maybe doing that this summer. So, we're looking at that.
Okay.
So, you just mentioned that you'd be doing the Bike Patrol also in the industrial section? So, that then kind of cuts the, at least the residential contact, projected hours in half, isn't that?
I think what Brad was referring to is the slower streets. Our priority's gonna be residential.
Okay.
It really is. And I even talked to one of the Aldermen that was inquiring about it this week, or last week, and I said, listen, wards or whatever, some wards have more industrial. You're not gonna see us constantly driving around the industrial park, because there's not a lot of opportunity for contact up there. But if we're having crimes that are occurring in industrial parks, such as vehicle burglaries and that in the evening hours, certainly we would spend some time up there. But this is residential-based, maybe some of the businesses on Irving Park Road, but I think what he was trying to say is we're not gonna be riding on Irving Park Road or riding on Addison Road. But we do plan to make contact throughout the town, not just in one area town.
Brad?
Yeah, just echo the chief. Yeah, I wasn't trying to say that there are 10 hours gonna be spent in the industrial park, just the, or the traffic volume or the nature of the roadways that they'd be on. So, I didn't wanna, didn't wanna speak for the chief on that, but that's where I was trying to go with that one.
Roll call for that. Roll call?
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, the next expanded level item, Police Department, is Crime Analysis Software. You know, I think the narrative's a pretty good overview of it. If there's any further questions, I would have to defer to, back to the chief for any more detailed questions on it.
Any other question? Mr. Woods?
We can't let the chief slide. So, quick Reader's Digest version, what's this gonna do for us?
This is gonna be both a public awareness tool and a tool for our officers to help detect some crime trends and things that are happening. Actually, there's been a development since the budgets were submitted. The company that we've been looking at using is, we're gonna be starting a program with them, and it's completely free. If you notice right now, and you receive it in your packets once every three or four months, a crime analysis of things that are happening around town. It's kind of dated information. You know, we do regular, on a weekly, on a regular basis, even daily basis, we look at trends that are happening around town. But the stuff that we share with the public is really a four-month window into what's happening in the neighborhoods. There's a company out there that we're, I hope to come back to in March and be able to demonstrate it to you. Like I said, completely free of charge, and this is what we're looking at to do, is it'll be a publicly available crime map, so they can see what's happening in their neighborhoods. For the police officers in the cars, we'll be able to visually pull up at any time, hey, what's the crime in the last 30 days? And there's heat maps that basically show you, you know, where things are more concentrated. For the officers in the cars, it'll actually have the narrative. You just click, we click right on the location, and it will tell us what's happening. So, what you're gonna see is basically an automated, more automated version of what we're producing every three or four months and putting on the website. It'll be regularly updated on a much, much more quick basis. We get a lot of people that ask, well, what's going on in my neighborhood? And we try and direct them to the website, but that information sometimes gets dated. So, we're looking to do that. And one other thing that's developed with this, county is looking at a new countywide records management system, report writing, basically replacing the current online system. And they're taking bids from vendors right now for that, for a countywide solution from state's attorney to courts to corrections to police. And as part of that, actually, some of these companies are bidding for the further crime analysis software that would allow us internally. There's a lot more tools and features that we would use, and that's the part that does cost some money. That's actually being built into a bid spec, and we're gonna know by this summer if that's gonna be a part of the new countywide system. So, if that were to develop, obviously, we wouldn't go forward with looking to purchase any additional software. That would be a part of the countywide system. So, this one's kind of a leap of faith, I guess. But you are, in the very near future, gonna see the version that's gonna be always seen to the public, and then we would come back to you looking for some additional software if the county doesn't include it in their whole system.
So, you're telling me that the residents will be able to pull this up on their computer at home, go to whatever wooddalepolicedepartment.com, and they'll be able to pull up this crime map, heat map, whatever? And that'll be current to that day, 'cause you guys are entering that stuff daily?
That's correct. It'll actually be a three-day delay, because there's, if we get something that's initially reported as a, let's say, a death investigation, or the one thing we're not gonna include on there is drug investigations, for obvious reasons.
That eliminates one of my questions.
Yeah. And the other part to that is, you're gonna see the 100 block of East Irving Park Road. You're not gonna see the specific address of where, but you're gonna get a view of what's happening in your neighborhood. So, yeah, that is gonna be coming very soon. It's a free version. There's a company out there that really does some really good work on it, and we're kind of excited that it's just, it's gonna automate what we're already sharing with the residents and make it more up-to-date. And it's gonna be live and interactive for them on the website at no cost.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, in my world, nothing's ever really free. So, we knew that there, down the road, there was a catch. This is the free thing to get you excited about it, to move forward at the higher levels. But one of my concerns is, again, this is a third-party vendor with sensitive information... But one of my concerns is, again, this is a third-party vendor with sensitive information or, or data and could have some unintended consequences. That would, that would be my concerns upfront, just hearing this. What do you, what do you, what do you think about that?
What the, the DuPage County has approved this and they've done it, they've started it with some other agencies, and they only pull down limited information and only, it's, like I said, it's the same information that's foable and publicly available as is right now. It's just automating the process, so.
Right, but foable, the issue, when you make it instantaneous-
Mm-hmm.
I'll go to a real estate perspective. If I, I'm looking to buy a house and I pull up the heat signature map and because for some reason you had a crime wave for one week, because, you know, teens got out of school and they hit five houses, all of a sudden, you know, real estate values in that area aren't so hot, you know? So those are one of the, just off the top of my head, unintended consequences of instantaneous data. I know it's all foable and, and everybody can get it, it's just a matter of how hard they have to work to get it. And sometimes when information's too easy to get, it's not really taken to heart or taken with a great assault, that, that's just a snapshot in time.
Sure, I, I can, I can see that, but I think it's important to have that information out there. One of the things that's connected to it is a, a link for an anonymous tip as to what might have happened, you know? And, yeah, I guess it does make it easier, but we get a lot of people that, they want more information, and I'm not saying more information is always good, but this, you know, as a snapshot can give a real nice picture, and we're already sharing it. It's just right now, we're using Streets and Trip, our Microsoft program, and we type in the thing and our volunteer pin maps it where it's at, and then we print that out and we do a hand analysis. And so we're still putting that stuff out. This'll just be a more automated process of doing that, so.
Well, that was going to be, you said first it'd be the 100 block, whatever, and now all of a sudden, you're going to pinpoint it. So you, some people get very sensitive when, you know, you pinpoint their address right on the computer, get a little nervous. I mean, how, how accurate is this going to be, I mean?
From the ones I've, that I've seen that are live examples, you'll see 1XX Irving. So you know it's the 100 block of Irving, that's all you know. You know, that stuff that, depending on the newspaper, and I know our newspaper doesn't publish it anymore, but those things, the reporters used to come in and write down every block and they would only, sometimes they would even include the address, but the nature of the call. And it's not going to have the narrative of what happened for the public to read. Just going to say there was a theft here, there was a, some type of crime that occurred in a certain place.
And then as far as whatever we're, you're looking at, you say in the county, so you're telling me whatever we're getting, the county's going to have so we can integrate with their system? Or are you waiting for the county first to make sure whatever we get will be able to integrate with their system?
Well, there really is no jeopardy in signing, not even signing, but us starting to do this, they're going to be using county data to input the current stuff right now, the stuff, the online reporting system that we're using. If the county rolls out a new system in the next year that works with a different vendor and a different company, we just walk away. We haven't paid a dime. We don't, we can stop this sharing at, at any time that we want to. The county is looking at, as part of this huge system, they've had crime analysis vendors contribute as part of the RFP, and they want to make that be a part of this whole system, too. So if county comes out with this new system that includes something from this company that, you know, will be available to all agencies countywide, obviously, at that point, we're going to walk away from anything we were doing and it'll be automated through the county then.
Mayor?
All right, a couple of times you've said free. I know Alderman Woods also alluded to it because something has changed since we did the budget, right? So the 5,300 is really not needed, is what you're telling me, right? Do I understand that correctly? There's, if we go with this trial company, it's, there's no more $5,300 cost, or is there still $5,300 cost?
There is no cost for now. What we're looking to do with this 5,300 is if it looks like the county's thing is not going to happen, what it would allow us to do is it has some more analysis tools that we can use inside the station that's secured inside the station, and it, there's some predictive analysis on when, you know, when things are happening. You can match it up against our, we can match it up against our parolee list or whatever, whatever other list and start to look at, hey, you might want to look because this parolee is, there's things happening around this house. So it, there's some more data tools that we would like to buy in the future, but if county, I, I, I'm hopeful it's going to become a part of the county system and we won't even need any of this money. And once we try this system, if it's not what we think it's to be, I'm not going to come back to you and ask for that money after May 1 to, to purchase it. We'll just walk away from it and just do the free part that we're doing, going to be doing now.
Alderman Woods had made a comment that, let's say, there's a crime spree in an area in five days, will the homeowners also have the ability to do an analysis and say, okay, yeah, this happened in five days, but over the last six months, you know, this has happened in other parts of the town as well? Will they be able to look at that, or are they just seeing current data?
No, the data will go back, I believe, up to a year. You can get a picture of what happens, and based upon, they have a lot of sophisticated analytics that if some, you know, if we get five house burglaries within two weeks in a, in, in town, which would be a lot just for in-town, it's going to heat, heat the map up a little bit, you know? If we get five house burglaries over a three-month period, not as much as far as intense activity. So it helps give some visual clues as to what's going on, too. And, you know, in roll call every day, three times a day, the officers are going through what happened in the last 24 hours. We read that, we, we look at that. You don't always remember everything that was read in roll call because they're going through several incidents from the day before, and visually, the officers will be able to pull it up in their car and see what's going on in town and, oh, yeah, there, there was a, you know, three or four thefts on East Irving, let's go, you know, spend some of our time over there or whatever, so.
Frank?
Frank?
Chief, I just want to clarify something here. Do you actually need our approval for this 5,300 or just our approval to-
Yes.
-do this program?
I, I would like the approval for the 5,300, but knowing that I will not come back to spend it if it looks like it's going to be a part of, part of the county system. The, the free, we can go ahead and do that because all it is, is it's an alteration of what we're already doing is our manual crime analysis, and we're posting on our website. We've been doing that for years, so.
So this, so this program is not just helping out the public, it's also helping out our police officers, like you explained?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, and the police officer part, I have absolutely no question that it's a good analysis tool for them. My only concern is the amount of information and how that information's discerned and how that information's used and the open market when it's that readily available. That's my only concern, is a police tool. I, I'm all for it, yeah, absolutely. For the police officers, it's a great tool.
Mayor?
I'd actually like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Reluctantly, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, is there any other questions on the police department? I'll move on to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. You know, the, the, it's kind of the biggest, the other, increasing to 1,500. You know, there's some regulatory testing requirements and, you know, lists that we have to maintain. I believe last year there were, I think it was the off-year where we had none, and this year, I believe both lists are, are due to be updated, so, or at least, at least one, I think both, Chief, both, both lists? Okay, yeah, both the patrol list and the sergeant list are due for testing this year, which is why that number, both of those numbers actually have increased the way they have is due to mandatory testing and list making, so.
Questions?
Okay, now, the next few slides in the booklet itself are Public Works Admins, Streets, Vehicle Maintenance, those we're all going to jump over, so we'll go to Central Services at this time. Central Services, contractual, again, the property casualty, the renewal, I believe I was in the manager report, was actually slightly lower this year in aggregate than last year. Also, we also found that Mezzaro treats the characterization and payments of the deductibles slightly differently than Irma did as well, so there was some savings, inherent savings on the deductible treatment as well, were able to capture after being with Mezzaro for a year. And then the healthcare costs, you know, as you're aware, you know, the sworn officers went with the union's plan, and then a renewal through IPBC and Gallagher. The preliminary renewal is, looks pretty favorable again this year. So all, all three of those items rolled in, were able to, to lower the contractual line item again. The interfund, you know, the, the SURF transfer, which we'll get to, then the other 8,000 on a little over a million, just nominal price increases on, on a couple of line items.
Mayor?
I wanted to add something. Do I just need to make a motion to do that, or?
I would say, I mean, I want to bring it up and try and get a consensus, if we wanted to add it, I would think the appropriate thing would be to get consensus of motion.
Seeing that we still have flooding problems and I still have a lot of people ask about this generator grant program, I mean, I personally, I'd like to put another 10,000 in there to their program since there are still a lot of people and since all the flooding problems aren't fixed.
Personally?
Program's not-
Right, so go ahead, put it in.
The program's not, not existing anymore, correct?
Believe we used to fund that through the electric aggregation, what was it called? The grant or-
Civic grant.
Civic grant. We no longer get that, so we'd be funding it ourselves this time, whereas before it was through a second party, so. If we wanted to do that, we could, it would just be out of our coffers instead of a grant.
Well, I, I think it's still helpful to the residents, and I know I've had a couple aldermen even ask me if we still have that program going because they've had residents ask about it. So, I mean, I, I have to make a motion to do it. I'd like to make a motion to put $10,000 back into the generator program and get that going again.
So if, if we were to do that, then basically the budget, I think you showed a 42, brings us down to 32, right?
Correct.
And we still haven't gone through the rest of the budget, so there's other things in around, right?
Yeah, at this point, relative to that 42,000 number, the three Public Works Departments are the only thing that we haven't gone through for the general fund that would affect that number.
No seconds, or it carries on?
There's no second, okay. This is any more discussion, that exit absent, the Public Works Divisions completes the general fund, Road and Bridge Fund and the Motor Fuel Tax Fund are public works in nature, so we'll move on from them. We'll go to the Tourism Fund.
I missed what you said.
Yeah, Road and Bridge and Motor Fuel Tax are public works-
Okay.
-by nature.
So we're going-
So we're going, we're going over those, correct? Or passing those over?
We'll do them in the next.
We'll do them, yeah, the next meeting, correct. And the increases in the interfund and then the other line item are both due to, you know, estimated cost increase with Prairie Fest this year being at a different site, larger site, there's been some estimated cost increases to manage and run the fest this year. Aside from that, I believe the Tourism Fund by and large otherwise is, is functionally the same year over year.
Yeah, because it was a public works, that's what I was asking. Yeah, on the revenues here, Brad, I mean, you're raising the video gaming to 85,000. Last year, you budgeted 76. You say it's going to be 80,000. Why are you going up when I know we've had discussions about the video gaming not being a solid number? Why, why not leave it at, you know, 77,000 or something?
Yeah, we can certainly do that if everyone's more comfortable with that. Just looking at the last few months, and then the, the number of businesses stabilized, so the, the numbers, to the extent that they, they're going to seem to have normalized to some extent, and that seems kind of like where it'll come in, but if everyone's more comfortable lowering that just due to some seasonality and things of that nature, we can, we can certainly do that.
I was just saying, just to be more cautious, that's all, I mean, I don't know what everybody else is feeling, but.
Okay.
So that takes that 46,000, too?
No, it's a different fund, so it doesn't impact that number.
Oh, you're only talking about the 42,000 plus, right? Guess everybody's fine with it.
If there's consensus to go either way on that, we can leave it or we can knock it back down 5,000 or-
The only reason I bring it up is because when we had the discussion about video gaming, it was always not a sustainable, it fluctuates, so why raise it?
Put it back down, that's fine. No problem. Are there any other questions on the Tourism Fund? Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, this is where the, the seizure and forfeited monies of the narcotics investigations go into. There is an expanded level item in the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. I apologize to the chief, I'll have to refer to him again for some detailed answers on this one, but the expanded level item is for a new K-9 unit in the police department. So if I just want to go to the page on the, yeah, I mean, the narrative, you know, kind of gives an outline for why we'd be looking to replace the K-9 unit. So I guess I defer to the chief, if there's any detailed questions on the, on the replacement of the unit.
We can make a motion to pass the new K-9 unit.
I'd second that.
Roll call.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Frank?
Chief, I got a question for you on the K-9. It's kind of a two-part. Do we know how effective the K-9 was as far as seizures, seizures and, and what actually revenue might have been produced by that? And then I do know that we do, do we loan this dog out to other departments, or do we charge when we do this?
First part is the narcotic forfeiture fund. That's built up through drug seizures, so that's where a lot of that comes from. Our particular dog has been involved in vehicles that we have seized and then, and then sold or other cash forfeitures. When we assist other agencies, too, such as Dumeg or sometimes the DEA has used us, we've gotten some considerable payments in the past from that. And then one other part to that is Dumeg, which we're a part of the DuPage County Task Force. They use our dog on, we, we have a full-time officer assigned to that, too. We assist them on a number of cases, and we receive not only the investigative tools that they get, but we've received in the last seven years, six, seven years, I think about $100,000 in payments from them separate- I think about a hundred thousand dollars in payments from them, separate, that were for contributing agencies for some of the seizures that they've made, so. When someone does use our dog, we don't charge them, but when we use someone else's investigators to assist us with something, you know, we just, we have these partnerships with the area agencies, that we're part of a canine response unit throughout the county. And then our dog is, and our handler are very good, and they get requested frequently to assist a lot of towns around us, but only to the point that it doesn't affect our agency at all. And then in return, you know, we get investigative assistance, we're a part of many different task forces for, from SWAT to accident reconstruction to major crimes. So we feel it's important to contribute to that stuff, and in return, we get a lot out of it, so, but there is no charge for the dog.
Sounds like a sound investment.
It is.
Peter?
I have a question, but it's just related to the fund in general. Chief, where does the, the forfeited funds dollar amount, where does that come, the court, the courts give that to us, or where does that come from? You have it as a miscellaneous, like four hundred dollars per post?
Yeah, and that amount, we never really count on how much, how many in seizures we're gonna have over the next month, or over the next year, because it's a hit or miss. What happens is if we get a cat, let's say we get a cash seizure off the street, we take that into custody and evidence, as evidence of a... And it's not just for someone that possesses some drugs, it's for someone that, you know, might be involved in the dealing. What we do then is we fill out paperwork that has to be reviewed by the state's attorney, state's attorney reviews it, they take it to, before a judge, the person is given a, a hearing, you know, the chance to present his case on why it shouldn't become a part of a seizure. If the judge rules that it should be turned over to us, then we go to finance, and with the money that we had been deposited into a holding account, we say, we need a check to go to the state police now, and then we get sixty-five percent, the state police gets twenty-five, and the state's attorney gets ten percent, I think, there's a, it's by statute is how it's split up. So it's a, it's a controlled process, a judge has to approve any of that money being turned over to us. We've had years that we've gotten a seven thousand dollar check, and then we've had years where, you know, it's, it's a few hundred dollars, so it's, it's tough to kinda plan on that for any particular case.
Does that include seized vehicles as well, or is that just cash?
The, if we seize a vehicle, we currently have a couple vehicles now that we've seized on certain cases that we'll use for some undercover work. If it gets to the point that those vehicles are no longer useful for us, we'll sell them through the city auction process, and then those funds have been returned to this in the past. Usually by the time we're done with the, you know, you're, you're not gonna get much out of them, it's, it's not a fifty thousand dollar car, but it, they, those funds do get returned into the, into the account.
First and a second, roll call.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Right, so that concludes narcotics forfeiture. Equipment replacement, this one's just showing that the fund is being zeroed out, narrative that the vehicles are gonna move to the SURF fund. The operating, or the other equipment was moved back into the operating fund, most notably the police department equipment, which we just covered a few minutes ago. Like I said, this fund is just getting closed out, and that's how this, this slide is reflecting.
Mayor?
Brad, I know we keep talking about this, oh, this is all for the equipment and the vehicles and whatnot, I know we were gonna look at, you know, some of the vehicles, let's say we're replacing them every five years, we're, we're gonna look at maybe six years or something, did we look into that, is that gonna come up later on in the budget, or is that another discussion for another day, I mean, I don't wanna...
Sure, that's, that'll be part of the SURF discussion, which is a new fund, so that'll be the March twelfth committee meeting.
I'm just curious where we ended up.
Yeah, just, just circle back to, to the mayor's comment, if you go to the, the SURF tab in the print book, there's the two-page, two pages of golden rod paper that kind of explain that, that process, that change. And yes, we did skip over the general capital equipment replace, or capital projects, some of those projects are public works in nature, so if, just by chance, somebody had a question, going back to the CIP from a month or so ago, we wanted to, you know, have everybody here for that conversation.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I saw that schedule, and I wrote it down here, is this the current schedule, is this the new schedule, what was the difference, I, that's, that's all, it didn't say that in here, where I noticed it.
Yeah, the vehicle schedule...
We don't have to talk about it now.
Well, the fleet, the fleet schedule that's in this book is the new revised.
Right, I was just curious what the old one was, and that's why.
Peter?
It might, we might be talking about this in the future as well, but exactly, why are we changing, why are we closing this and starting a new fund? Is that gonna be talked about, I mean, we don't need to discuss it tonight until we talk about it.
Yeah, we'll get to it in the March, at the March meeting.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Land acquisition, you know, this is one that if we, if we look to acquire any land, we'll move money in here and acquire the land. It's also money where the money from FEMA, AIMA, for the hazard mitigation grant will come back into this fund, when we get that money back from them, so there'll be a little bit of money in there. You know, we typically don't budget for any, any land acquisitions, we don't specifically know what's gonna come up during the year, or, you know, what those costs might be, but we do need to account for it, so that's why this fund is, is in there. Sanitation fund, this is the, Republic Services, the garbage contract effectively, the increase in the contractual is just the increase in the contract. You know, it's a set contract, I think we have another three or four years left on the contract, so we just, we increase the expense by the contract, and we offset, increase the revenue commensurate to the increase in the expense.
How many years?
How many years left?
It's three, three, I think it's three, three or four, left.
Left?
It was originally like...
It was a seven-year contract. I thought, I thought we're like in year six already, or at least five.
I think there's three years left.
Can we double check that, just, I never liked that contract, it was terrible, it went past, and I voted against it. We still got three years on that thing? Oh, it's terrible. Yeah.
We'll put the, we actually were talking about that a little earlier in the week, we'll, we'll put an update on the contract status in tomorrow's manager's report.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, I was hoping it was only another year left.
It's more than a year.
Terrible.
Do they start early negotiation on that, like a, a year out before it expires, to get other vendors involved?
Yeah, we'll, we'll start early, it's just, I think it's too early at this point.
Right, right.
We'll give you an update tomorrow.
Okay.
Did you have?
Yeah.
Brad, quick question, miscellaneous UB penalty, what's that for exactly?
The late penalties for the people that don't pay their bill, it's UB's utility billing, and so. Police pension fund, really the, the increase, there's benefit payments, you know, so as the officers retire, they start drawing on their pensions, and you've had some retirements, and so the benefit payments go up, there's really, city doesn't really have a whole lot of control, you know, over how, what, what the benefit payments are, I mean, they are what they are relative to who's retired and still, still drawing a pension. I do know that the, the income, the revenue for the pension fund the last couple of years has, has done rather well in this market, so that's good. And, you know, the, and that's evidenced by the fact that their actuarial request this year is only about four thousand dollars over last year. Last five or six years, it averaged out about eighty to eighty-five thousand a year increase in their actuarial request, and this year was, I think, just a little over four thousand, so the returns are definitely coming back, and also the tier two is not really having a huge effect, but, you know, as, as newer officers are coming on, that is starting to moderate that number a little bit as well.
Mayor?
And the number that you're talking about after the actuarial study, that's the additional contribution from the city, that's, is that the number you're talking about?
Sure, so the actuarial request is actually the subtotal line item, minus the participants' contributions, it's the real estate taxes plus the additional contribution. So those two numbers added together is the actuarial request.
Well, I'm just talking about our share, I understand about the real estate taxes.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, but, yeah, so the city's portion of that, yes, would be that additional contribution.
And as far as funding, where are we at now, do we, do we know? 'Cause I know this is always a big topic.
Yeah, I have the report on my desk, and we can put that in tomorrow if you'd like.
Well, I know we're, I know we're better than most communities, I just like to know that, where we at, where we're at.
And actually, the last one of the evening, special service areas, you know, again, the four active SSAs, they're all, there's no construction going on, on them, so they're debt service funds at this point. The reduction in the bond interest, as you may recall, we refinanced SSAs twelve, thirteen, and fourteen to some pretty significant savings, and so those interests, the reduction of those interest payments is, is, you know, the main reason for that, for the savings is the reduction of those interest payments, so, you know, saving the business owners in those different service areas, you know, it's pretty good money, you know, for the next few years until the bonds are fully paid off. Yeah, those are all the non-public work slides that we have, so.
Matt's not here, so.
Have any questions?
Items to be considered in...
Anything to be considered for further meetings? Instead, I guess, needs a German.
Need a motion.
Motion, the second for Germany.
Well, Matt's not here, that's why.
Do we need him?
Do we need him?
We only need him if he's got a question.
I'm good, it's only nine fifteen.
Right, I mean, unless...
I know some of the residents would like to go home.
Well, they can leave anytime they want.
You know, I, personally, I'm okay, I would defer to the manager and Mr. Rubach, if they're comfortable moving forward, I...
Ken is a backup, in case we need to, you know, he's got everything memorized.
Don't bother me, I'm good.
I guess I, I would defer to Mr. Rubach and/or the manager, I mean, you guys do whatever you want.
Yeah, you want to go, Mike, you're okay?
You mind?
I don't mind, I...
The council mind?
Does anybody have any objection? No, okay.
All right, we'll carry on.
Go for it.
All right, well, that point, I think this slide's rolled back to the road and, Public Works Administration, back into the general fund.
Oh, wait, Eileen, you need a break?
You, you want a break?
Okay, Eileen's, okay, good. Where are we going, Brad, Public Works Administration?
Correct. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, see, Public Works Administration, this is where the director, the assistant director of Public Services and the executive assistant are paid out of. Contractual, building maintenance, you know, building, you know, it's getting a little bit older over there on Central, so there's a few more repairs that need to be done. Reductions in fuel, and then the commodity side of building maintenance, really the, the commodity costs have kind of flipped over to the contractual side a little bit, so still roughly the same, the same amount of money going into the building, it's just kind of the, you know, it's the commodity or contractual side of things. And then other is the, the safety program, trying to do a few things with the safety program for the guys over in the seven-twenty Building, Streets, and Vehicle Maintenance Division.
Questions?
The Streets Division, you know, there are two expanded level items in the Street Division. You know, one of the, and they're in the contractual line item, which is why that number has jumped up. The commodities, there's a product, the Public Works, I think we actually started using it already, that for snow and ice control, that is not MFT eligible. Local Roads has not approved it yet to be eligible for their costs to use MFT funds, so we're having to fund it through the general fund. And then capital outlay, you know, in the prior year, there was the expanded level, the new lawn mowers, last year, obviously, don't need, all of those lawn mowers to be replaced again this year, so that number has come down, I believe there's a couple items in there for the seventeen thousand, but last year, the, the spike was for the, the two or three new lawn mowers. Plus, is any general questions? Yeah, we'll move into the, the two expanded level items, and then I'll defer to Mr. Rubach for any technical questions on the tree trimming or sidewalk maintenance.
Question, Frank?
Actually, I would like to make a motion to do the tree trimming program.
I would second that.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
So the next expanded level item is the...
I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk replacement.
I'd second that.
Roll call.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
So we'll move along to the vehicle maintenance, another division, department within the general fund with a decreased budget this year. Largely it's due to the reduction in capital outlay, last year there was a couple of bigger ticket items that they needed to replace in the garage. Nominal uptick in dues and subscriptions for some of the, the readers and the, the technical devices in the garage. Other than that, pretty, pretty vanilla, and they, they do what they do over there, and they pretty much come in with the same number every year, so. Okay, just, just by way of getting through the vehicle maintenance fund, then, then that was the last one in the general fund we didn't get to. So, general fund is now done, and I believe the grant generator did not get a second, so it'd still say the forty-two thousand would still be, be the number at this point, so, just for those keeping score at home.
Seeing that it is still the same, again, I'd like to ask the aldermen up here if they would, if anyone would second that, I know a lot of residents are still asking. There still are problems with the power outages, there are still flooding issues, it's to help the residents.
I'll second that.
Never got a second.
Never got a second.
What was the number of it? Ten.
Okay, we need a roll call, unless somebody's... Okay, we need a roll call unless somebody, unless somebody has a question.
Yeah, how does that program work exactly? Because in my area, we hardly ever have a power outage because we've got underground power lines. So how does it work as far as the, go ahead.
Sure. So the way the program is set up was that resident, one per property, could go and purchase a portable generator. They would get reimbursed fifty percent up to two hundred and fifty dollars of that purchase. Or if they installed a whole home generator, it would be four hundred dollars plus their permit fees refunded to them. So I think they came out to like five thirty-eight, I think, after the permit fees.
Okay.
Plus you had to show bill of sale plus, plus you had to show the identification number of the machine.
Correct, yeah.
If you're going to bring this back in, I want all residents that already purchased one off that list. It's not, not to get another one.
Right.
It's a one-time deal. If you bought it last time, you don't get another one this time. Because sometimes people will say, well, it was broke. They give one to their friend, so.
Sure, and, yeah, and it, the way the original kind of business rules of it were written was one per, per, per address.
And you have, you still have records of ones that were purchased in the last term or?
We do. Yes.
So Woods?
Haven't the outages improved though? I mean, I can't think of, I personally can't think of one last year. So I'm, I'm having a hard time with how many people are calling about the generator. But I'm not getting the call, so that's why I'm asking.
Ward four was the worst. We haven't had any calls.
Yeah, like Alderman Sizmarski said, ward four was the worst. They did do some infrastructure improvements over there. Ward one used to also have a lot of problems. They did do some infrastructure improvements over there. I'm sure we're still having some pockets here and there and with flooding, could still be a problem. But the major problems were kind of alleviated in one and four.
Mayor?
Right. And regardless if it's underground or not, I mean, sometimes you'll have wires fry underground. It takes a little longer, but let's face it, if there's nobody calling, then nobody's going to go out and get a generator. This is just in case, is what it is. I mean, last time, I believe we put it in before we started the electric aggregation. And then because of the electric aggregation, we were able to use that money. And I think it was like seventy thousand we ended up spending, right, or more, thirty-five thousand a year.
But then the power was going out.
Right, we, we were loose.
It had some value. And I'm okay if there's, you know, a need, you know, but I don't want to create value propositions because somebody actually wants to buy a generator.
Back when the wind would blow.
That's my, that's my only concern.
The wind would blow and power would go out and no storm.
And also, that's going to work if somebody's home to turn on the generator, right?
Right.
Okay.
Peter?
And I mean, we still do on occasion, again, that's why I'm just, I've had people ask me about it. The mayor himself had this summer, his whole half of the street was out for hours. So it's, it still has been happening in ward one, and I'm not sure in ward four. But I know some people have asked me about it in my ward.
Okay. No further questions?
Any questions? Roll call.
Frank.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Nope.
Okay, so moving on, now moving to the Roden Bridge Fund. This one was a fair amount of movement in this fund this year. There's three expanded level items on the contractual area. As you see, roadway striping, pavement patching, and street sweeping. Commodities, other parts of materials, underutilized line items, so we resolve that. And the transfer, we used to transfer two hundred thousand dollars to the capital projects fund to fund some projects. With these expanded level items theoretically coming on board, we eliminated that two hundred thousand dollar transfer to capital projects to fund those projects. And then the transfer to the SURF is for the final snowplow replacement of the fleet. And then we'll start over with the, you know, way off. I think it's another eight to ten years before they start to come back, back online for replacement again. So really, like I said, we moved the money around between the interfunds. But the three expanded level items are kind of the highlight of this fund this year. So there's a question about commodities, we'll move into the roadway striping expanded level item.
Tony?
Now, the roadway striping, it says here, they're going to take care of ward four and one. I mean, are we going to be looking at throughout the whole city, especially where the school buses stop and in the parks, and make sure that those stripes are taken care of throughout the whole city?
Yeah, two-part answer. One, I know they're going to go through ward by ward. But for that finite question, I will defer to Mr. Rubach on how they're going to handle, address those items.
You say parks?
Parks.
Those are park district. That's not us.
But the street. The street.
The street, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we will take a look at it. This is just to basically get us on a cycle. As it was being performed before, it was more, so there's an area that's bad, let's do it now. But we've gotten to the stage where a lot of areas are bad in multiple wards. So this way, you kind of have an expectation as a council as well to give to your residents when their striding is going to be done. If there are certain areas around schools, we will make sure those get taken care of.
Okay.
The one thing you'll notice with all these new expanded level items, you'll notice that we're starting, let's say in ward four or ward two or ward three, we tried to stagger them where each expanded level item, one of those items would start in a certain ward. So it's kind of equalized among them all. So they're not all starting in ward four. You'll have one program starting in ward four, you'll have another starting in ward two, and we kind of staggered them. That's the, so they're not all starting in ward four, and you'll see that as it goes on, it switches, so.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that we've talked about for four years. And I haven't seen us make any real headway. So I'm hoping that we can move forward. We still have the decorative crosswalks that still need to be go, to go in, right? That's on Wooddale Road and by Westview School. And to Alderman Catalado's point, that those areas where the schools are at and where we have heavy foot traffic, traffic of children, those should be number one priority. Forget the bouncing around wards. Those should be, you know, the public safety issue should be at first concern. So just take that and look at it. Thank you.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to, to the roadway striping program.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move on to the pavement patching. This one...
I'll make a motion to approve the pavement patching program.
Questions? Mayor?
Just one quick question. I mean, we're talking about some, and here it says large-scale patching. I mean, is this in-house or is this, somebody else can handle this for us? I'm just curious. I mean, I'm good with the expanded level.
No, it'll be contractual just because of the size of the patches.
Okay, that's, that's all right, because it said large, and I know we only handle certain, okay, just.
Further questions?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I'm assuming this will cover forest preserve?
Yes, we will. We've been looking at certain areas in that ward, and forest preserve is one of those areas that has been targeted.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last one in here is the street sweeping, which I know we discussed that committee a couple weeks ago. And staff got direction to go out and retain bids. Bid for this actually is coming back on the March twelfth committee meeting, I believe. So sixty was what we had plugged in, just as an estimate, you know, hopefully, certainly a high estimate. But before, you know, we'll certainly take those bid results and the direction from the committee that night and then modify this number commiserate to those bid results and the vote of the council or the vote of the committee that night as well before approving the final budget document.
Maybe you can answer this. What, what are we doing, why isn't this coming out of the vehicle part of the Public Works? Because of the fact we're not using our sweep, street sweeper? What's going to happen with that one? And where's that money going to go to? Why wouldn't we take money from that vehicle and put it into this project? We have a street sweep we're not going to use anymore?
Correct.
We're going to sell it? We're going to let it sit?
Yeah, for the manager.
Yeah, when we had this discussion a couple months back, the council directed us to do one year with a three-year option to try to get the best pricing, but reevaluate the program after one year. So not necessarily ditch the sweeper right away, since we haven't outsourced and tested out the program. So we weren't going to sell the street sweeper right away. And then we were going to push back the replacement. Yeah, because we needed a replacement street sweeper as well, so we moved that back. And then we want to see how the outsourcing goes.
Mayor?
Well, that was a question I was going to ask. I thought our street sweeper is coming to the end of its life. And the new street sweeper, I think it was what, two hundred and fifty thousand or something, more than that?
Correct, yeah, I think...
New street sweeper, so they can't do what we wanted it to do with the leaves and...
Well, the leaves, we never did the leaves. I mean, we're not going to have...
Right, but this is, this will pick up the debris that we can't do with our sweeper, I thought.
Can you come and rake my yard too?
Are you talking about having residents push their leaves into the street? No, that's not, that's not...
What I'm saying is, when, what Matt said is, the street sweeper we have, the cleaning up, people are saying there's leaves and stuff left. Our street sweeper can't pick up that...
Correct, yes, Alderman. What Matt was referring to is there's two different types of sweepers. A broom, mechanical sweeper that we currently have, or a vacuum sweeper. Mechanical broom sweepers are notorious for not being able to handle large amounts of debris, as you will get in, you know, fall or spring. Not necessarily from resident leaves, but just, you know, accumulation over time. And having companies that have that option to use a vacuum sweeper will help a lot with cleanliness. As opposed to having to go over areas three or four times, will be able to go through once, pick it all up, and that should help eliminate some complaints.
That's what Matt said about this one, since he worked for some company, said whatever contracting would...
When, he said...
Their machines would be more accessible to picking up what ours can't.
Right, he said where, he worked previously in that city municipality, they outs, they had somebody else. But I got to, and part of this was also, our guys, what do we do? One sweep a month, was it?
Correct, yes.
And, and we're looking at doing more? I'm not sure exactly.
Correct. We're looking at doing eleven sweeps in a year. So we'll do about three in the beginning when it's heavy, and then three in the fall when it's heavy. So we're increasing service levels by four or five sweeps.
Okay, because I know that was, I've had residents tell me about our street sweeping not being up to snuff.
Need to stress that our residents also not to blow them into the street.
Well, that's...
I'd cut the lawn and throw the lawn in the street either.
Right.
Peter?
One of my questions was just answered that we are going to do a couple more sweeps. You had said that we're going to be doing more. The other thing to keep in mind here is this also, didn't this alleviate time for, you know, the people who were doing this before to do other things for the city?
Correct, yes. When we had initially received, I feel that some calls from Alderman about expanding service levels, that was our one area of concern in Public Works, having someone dedicated to, basically eleven weeks of sweeping would impact us in other areas. And this allows him to free up to work on other projects that we have.
And just, so I know what, so we did, say we, we swept once a month. How long did it take our guy to sweep the entire city for that one week? I mean, was he out there five days doing all four wards? It took him a week or just take him one day?
Right, depending on debris levels, you were anywhere between, you know, a week and a half to...
A week and a half.
To two weeks, yes, depending. It was anywhere between, depending on the local...
So seven to ten days, what you're saying, okay. So you're alleviating that guy to do other, other work?
Correct, yes, and these sweepings should be done within a week.
I'm going to make a motion to pass.
Second.
Question, Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I was going to, maybe we can make a change. But if, if our goal was that we needed to buy a new machine anyway, why don't we get, also get rid of the machine? What difference does it make if we were already going to buy a new one as part of the process?
The machine replacement was in the out years, so.
Yeah, we, we pushed the replacement back one to two years, I think. And I don't want to put Mr. Rubach on the spot, but I think the, the only concern with getting rid of it before we were comfortable with the level was if we had to go out and do some sort of like emergency sweep in between one of theirs before we had it...
Like a microburst or something?
Yeah, before we had it ironed out.
But that's true of everything we do, you know, it's always nice to have, you know, six extra squad cars and four extra tow trucks and plows and, so, but at a certain point, we have to enter reality. I mean, we can't afford everything.
Yes, I guess that's really a policy decision, if you want to get rid of it.
And if you're going to expand to that level of cleaning, that's almost double what we're doing. Now we'll have one guy, that's all he does. Because if it takes him ten days to do that, so the more I hear this, the more likely it is we're not going to go back to our own, unless we're going to hire a guy too that's just going to do nothing but street sweeping. And I don't see that happening. Does anybody here see that as a viable option?
Well...
Well, the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars wouldn't be that either because it would be beat. They would bring it to us to ask for a larger machine that could hold more stuff instead of smaller. So I don't know why, we can't just change it, amend it, change it, and sell it, get rid of a vehicle.
Yeah, I got to. So let's say we're saving it for this emergency. I mean, we had this problem with brush pickup. And I think we've corrected that problem now for emergency brush pickup. So if we need an emergency street sweep, I mean, isn't that something that we can discuss with the contract? So we can get rid of this machine and why keep it in our garage? Because we're getting tight on parking anyways.
It's the garage we don't have.
Well, we can get rid of the machine and keep that money on the side in case of an emergency street sweeping.
Right.
Use it for that. That frees up a spot in the garage for another machine that we can park.
I, I don't see why we need to keep it either.
I believe, as the manager said, the reason for keeping it for the year was to do a test to make sure the council was happy with the level of service you were getting from this, if it was actually worth the money. So that was our reason for holding on to the machine for another year.
Mayor?
But the other thing was, we're pushing the date, the purchase date back. So, so it's an old machine. We need to upgrade it anyways. So what's the use of keeping it? We're going to buy the new machine if we're going to...
One way or the other, we're selling it.
Right.
We're going to go through, if we're pushing it back two years, we're going to go through this service one year.
Right.
You'd only be pulling it back one. It just doesn't make sense.
We'd be buying a new machine anyways if we, if we don't like the service.
Get rid of it now while we can.
Right.
So when we have Perry Fest and the Memorial Day Parade, the company's going to come out and clean up for those dates? Okay.
Oh, that's included.
Yes, we built that into the budget.
Excellent.
Peter?
The other thing, as Art Woods had mentioned, I mean, just having it sit around, it's going to also depreciate more for him. If we get rid of it now, it might be worth a little more than waiting another year.
You're amending the motion to sell the street?
I'll...
Well, Mike made the motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion to include...
Well, no, Mike made the motion, Peter, you second, right, so.
I agree. Free it up. Roll call.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And I just, and this is, of course, that we're getting proper bids. Because if the bids come in at a hundred and fifty thousand for some crazy reason, then we will, we'll relook at it. Just in case, you never know, some crazy stuff happens. Until we get the bids, right? Okay.
Next is the motor fuel tax. You know, in the prior years, we had the, it was the equipment ran a line item in the contractual. equipment ran a line item in the contractual, but it was the vehicle leases for some of the, some of the snow plows, some of the internationals. Those are rolling off the books, those are done now. As you saw, we're procuring the last one out of the Road and Bridge Fund, previously discussed. That's why the significant decrease in contractual. The commodities is up due to snow and ice control, AKA salt prices. So, there is a, you know, a growing fund balance in the MFT Fund, and we've been, some conversations with Public Works, you know, I defer to Mr. Rubach for some more finite details, but the, the way the Motor Fuel Tax Fund works is, it's better to kinda save up some money and then do a project out of there. So it's just one bid spec, one review by local roads, instead of trying to do a number of smaller projects. So at this point, we're kind of of the mindset of, of seeing if there's a project over the next year or two that fits into the pot of money that's accruing in the Road and Bridge Fund, and then applying it towards that at this point, and then kinda, kinda rolling it over that way, if that...
Mayor?
I understand what you're saying right there, because I know there's a lot of paperwork and all that stuff. Motor fuel tanks, I mean, this can be used for resurfacing and whatnot, is that correct? So, we have a nice big project over in Ward Two where we're doing, finishing up those streets. Instead of going up, because if I'm not mistaken, this enterprise fund, we only need fifteen percent, which would be like a, what, seventy-five or a hundred-and-fifty thousand balance? Enterprise funds, generally?
Yeah, yeah, well, MFT technically is special revenue, so that, it's, yeah, fifteen percent, so significantly lower balance at that point.
So instead of, you know, raising this fund up, what, a hundred-and-twenty thousand? I don't know, Ward Two, the streets are gonna be done this year, I'm sure it might be surfacing, resurfacing, or the asphalt could be five-hundred thousand or something. We'd still then have four-hundred, maybe five, four-hundred thousand in this left, which we'd still be having a nice fund balance. Is that correct?
Mathematically, yes, that'll be correct.
Doesn't wanna move the money?
Well, no, I just think that...
I mean, if you got, if you guys have some kind of project lined up, you know, great, let's hear it. But we do have the Ward Two streets, and, you know, where's the Ward Two streets come out of when we do that project? Capital projects.
Capital projects, correct, yeah.
So, this'll be one big project, move it over, we still keep four-hundred thousand balance.
Yeah, the...
And we got more money for capital projects.
Expand the resurfaces, too, to...
Well, see, but the thing is, if you do the resurfacing, then it's different paperwork for every street, correct?
Yeah, and...
That's what they're trying to avoid.
And local roads, they need to approve the bid documents before they get sent out for bid. They need to review the specs and things like that, so it's, it's not as simple as, oh, let's just throw the half million dollars over here, so...
But that's why we got you.
But if we don't make it for this one, for some reason, this would stall the Ward Two bid, well then, we know for the following year, when we're supposed to do the next two streets, we'll be ahead and we'll have that ready to go, right?
You are correct, yes.
Unless you guys do not agree, I...
I concur.
Okay.
Mathematically correct.
Peter?
On here, there's expenditure, streetlight maintenance. It says contractual maintenance of city-owned streetlights. On the list of bills, we, I see a lot that we're having electric companies, we're paying money to different companies to fix streetlights. What exactly does our contract maintenance, what does that include on the streetlights?
Good.
Those are the Elman and Nelson bills you see coming through pretty regularly, so, defer to Mr. Rubach.
Right, and a lot of those Elman and Nelson bills you may be seeing too are for doing duly locates. So anytime we get a call in for something, Elman and Nelson comes out and locates our electric lights. So Elman and Nelson may be called out for, if there's a streetlight knockdown, or if there's a wire that's shorted, to come out and repair those things.
What exactly, I mean, does the maintenance cover, though? 'Cause I always thought that our, that Public Works fix the streetlights if there's a problem with them.
Public Works does not fix the streetlights in-house. We have, electricians do that. There is no current maintenance contract in place that Matt and I have been able to find. Generally, we do it on a, on a call basis. Right now, if we have a, you know, time of materials type basis.
Any questions?
You can try.
Whatever, yeah. Five-hundred thousand. I'm gonna make a motion to move the five-hundred thousand that we were previously talking about out of that fund.
Second. Brett?
For clarification purposes, that's to the Capital Projects Fund, correct?
Correct.
For the Ward Two streets?
Streets.
Right, that could be done, and it's one paperwork. I mean, maybe you need five-hundred thousand, maybe you only need four-hundred thousand, maybe you need six-hundred thousand, but it would be one project, like you were talking about, that's what you were saving it for. I'm just helping you out.
Correct.
Thank you.
One project.
He's mathematically correct.
It is.
Questions? Roll call?
Mike did.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Speaker of the House, General Capital Projects Fund. You'll notice the front end of this was the Goldenrod page with the updates that came out of the CIP meeting earlier this year. The aforementioned window wall replacement, wastewater treatment plant, Veterans Memorial Landscaping, added some money for the fiscal sixteen facade program, and then in the out years. Unfunded items, the bearing of the comm ed lines and City Hall aesthetics, those were the updates out of the CIP meeting from earlier this year. Also, the recent addition of the half million dollar show on motor fuel tax into there. And then, we will go through and, as a result of tonight, the bid from Woodside, we'll go ahead and modify that number as well in here for the final, the final version, based upon that bid result. Aside from that, aside from that, nothing changed from the CIP meeting in January.
That's City Hall window repla, it's the front and back, correct?
They'd be correct. All the...
All the windows.
All the blue case windows.
Questions? You need a roll call for that, correct, Mayor?
No, it's, everything says, is, we're not changing anything.
Okay.
Here we are, to our good friend, the SURF.
Oh, the SURF.
SURF, yeah. So, the SURF Fund, in its purest form, is a vehicle replacement fund that is, you call it a sinking fund, you call it an appreciation fund. What it does is, after you get a couple of years in, so, this first year, the number's pretty high, 'cause what you do is, you go through and you amortize the cost of the vehicle replacement over a five, seven, eight, nine-year period. And so you're transferring whatever, you know, year, rolling year we wind up with, you take, say, a fifth of that vehicle cost and fund that each year. So what that does is, as you go through and you calculate out what a fifth of that cost is, or a tenth of that cost for some of the bigger vehicles, you smooth the funding. And so instead of having, you know, if we go to, use a real-world example in the book, if you go to page one-twenty-three of the print book in the SURF tab, I apologize, I don't have this on the screen, you'll see, on page one-twenty-three, the bottom, you see, you know, this year would be three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, next year would be three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, fiscal eighteen is ninety thousand, and then you jump back up to two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, three-eighty-four, forty-three, two-seventy-six, twenty-three, three-seventeen, two-sixty-five. So you, the numbers fluctuate pretty, pretty drastically from year to year. So, as you go through and do the smoothing process, the SURF funding, 'cause you're pre-funding, you're amortizing these purchases, you're not gonna have that sticker shock, those huge fluctuations each year as you, as you move forward.
Mr. Woods?
Why, why are we changing this? I mean, this all presupposes that we're gonna buy or trade in these trucks, or upgrade these trucks, or pieces of equipment in a predetermined period of time, correct? So why are we making all these changes and, what wasn't working before?
The, especially with the, with the international plow trucks all coming due in a, in a, in a batch, and now, you know, there's gonna be some off-years, and they're gonna come due again. Effectively, the, the funding of the vehicle replacements, you know, as evidenced by those numbers, they, they spike up and down. So from a budgetary standpoint, one year we have to find budget authority for three-hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars worth of vehicles, and the next year, ninety thousand, and then back up to two-eighty-eight. Well, you know, if it was, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars every year, that's a lot easier to budget, a lot easier to forecast. And then in the years where there's the valleys, nobody's going to, you know, propose, you know, new programs, new benefits, something to that effect, where the next year, you go, oh my God, now we have to find another two-hundred thousand dollars that we just gave away to Project X last year.
But that's always one of my concerns, because we have money sitting there to replace a truck or a piece of equipment. We magically think that we have to. In a lot of our conversations with upping the amount we spend on the equipment, buying the proper equipment for the proper climate, was to extend the longevity of that vehicle or equipment. So, I'm just fearful that if we create this pot of gold, if you will, you know, it, it just makes it a little easier to run through the cycle and stop looking at the equipment on an as-needed basis to get, you know, the best value or bang for our buck.
Sure, and one of the things that Public Works Director, Mr. Rubach, and the garage did, and it's outlined a little bit on those Goldenrod pages, was to come up with a fundamental point system, like a score for each vehicle. And there's some guidelines for when the vehicles will be reviewed, or each one will be reviewed annually, and then depending on their score, you know, it'd be a little, admittedly, it could be a little organic, depending on how the scores come in at certain times, points in time. You know, within the next couple of years, it could be some organic movement if a vehicle's more worn down, or if it's performing better, you bump it out a couple of years. There are a few vehicles I know in this replacement schedule that's in Budget Binder, that I think were even scheduled to be replaced last year, that are still out another one or two years now, because they've just continued to perform well. The other thing, you know, you're, is it pot of gold, did you say? You know, we have had the occasion where we've had to replace a vehicle sooner, because it was just breaking down sooner, which wasn't budgeted for, or, you know, so again, there was a little bit of the sticker shock, budget shock, you know, and now we have to find another forty thousand, another forty-five. Or if you're pre-funding the vehicles over a course of time, you'll have the flexibility, if a vehicle does, you know, become more lemony in nature, or falls apart quicker than we expect, you're not gonna be scrambling to try to fund that replacements, 'cause the money will be there. So you are correct, in a sense that it could, you know, complacency could set back in, but that's why the garage and the Public Works Director and Mr. Rubach have gone through and developed that point system, you know, rigid point system to try and, and stave off that complacency due to the pot of gold effect.
All right, Mayor?
Yeah, Brett, just so I understand, I mean, I'm looking like at a lot of these trucks, like estimated replacement aerial truck, aerial lift number two-twenty-six, shows twenty, twenty-two. Is that after we purchased the one in nineteen? I'm not su, or is that... I, I just, I don't understand it. We've got twenty-twenty-two here, and we're buying it in two thousand and nineteen, so I'm, is there, why is...
We didn't like it.
We didn't like it?
Yeah, sure, so, so some of them, and, and this'll be a refined...
And there's a lot of them that don't match the...
They don't match, sure.
So I'm just curious as to why, I'm sure there's some method to the madness in that.
Yeah.
I just wanna understand what's going on.
Well, sure, of course, yeah. A large number of these, especially the ones that are off a year or two, were, I believe largely based on their score. So we're trying to illustrate, albeit didn't come across apparently that well, was, you know, the estimated replacement, like it was the, kinda like the original replacement date, and then now, like the twenty-nineteen, that's kinda where it wound up getting slotted after going through the scoring process.
And, follow up, Mike. And, you know, after what Alderman Woods just said, basically, so, now you're thinking you might have to buy it three years earlier, but of course, we're gonna evaluate this before we, right? And you guys will be reporting to the council these scores and stuff before these trucks get shipped out?
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for the Public Works Department, but I believe that...
I think we can make that a policy, right?
Yeah, I would say, I believe the scores, the scores will, will come with the report on the vehicle replacement.
Right.
So, you know, vehicle, you know, you know, ninety-nine needs to be replaced, it scored out at thirty-two.
And the only reason I'm, I'm bringing that up, and that's before you guys got here. There were some trucks that were changed and, through the grapevine, you know.
Didn't need any.
I was pretty green, didn't know much back then, eight years ago, and, well, we got rid of a, I don't know, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar truck, because somebody didn't wanna buy the new tires. I heard something like that. It was before your time. You guys weren't in charge back then, but I know you guys are a lot better.
Yeah, so, I, I know what you're speaking of.
Okay.
You know, but, yeah, so, so the scoring system will, you know, for every vehicle replacement, the score, you know, will be included and things of that nature.
I just...
And I believe, Mr. Rubach, every year, every vehicle will go through the...
Yes, we'll score it.
Yeah, every vehicle will get scored every year going forward.
Okay.
And then just, the other comment, you know, the, the first couple of years, because you have to fund the first year and then proportionate share of the next couple of years, so that, that number is, is not what the number's going to be every year going forward. It's gonna moderate down significantly in a year or two.
And, just a one quick follow-up. I know you gave us the new schedule, but I was just curious what the old schedule was, 'cause you said this is the new schedule. We don't need it right now, but, you know, sometime next week. I'm just curious if, you know, I see eight years for something, so was it six years before, five years? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it depends on the vehicle class, so...
I'm always curious, I'm sorry.
I, I believe, by and large, I'd say the majority of the vehicle classes, the estimated useful life in this current model is longer than the, the previous model. I think the squads are the exception. I think the squads stay the same. I think everything else stretched out.
No problem.
So...
Yeah, Ken, could you maybe speak to how the grading system works? Is this something you guys graded? Is this a nationally accepted grading system?
Right.
Is everybody on the same page, or...
Right, there's multiple grading systems used by different municipalities. Matt and I researched quite a number. There's no standard laid, laid out by APWA, American Public Works Association, so we looked at multiple plans across municipalities of different sizes in different states, and kind of did a hybrid of those, what we thought was a good, a good and fair way to rate vehicles, to be able to come to the council when CIP is up and say, these are the vehicles we wanna replace, and why, as opposed to, the vehicle's ten years old, it needs to go. So this gives you and us a little more information as to why we need to replace it according to the scoring system. These years are just a general, general guideline, as Brett said, sometimes it may move up, sometimes it may move back. And also, as Brett stated, for the most part, most of these years were extended out from what we originally had from replacement schedules, with the exception of the police department, which stayed at three years.
Thank you.
Peter?
Going back a little bit earlier to what Alderman Woods said, so, I mean, this scoring system, this isn't gonna change, because we have all this money there, and we have it for two thousand and nineteen replacement. I mean, the scoring, the way you're doing it is gonna stay consistent, so we're not just gonna say two... is going to stay consistent, so we're not just going to say, two thousand and nineteen, oh yeah, this is on there, we're, we really need this, and it scores wherever the score is. I mean, it's going to be a consistent way you're doing it, correct?
Yes, correct. Every vehicle, we will come up with a scoring every year, similar to how a street sufficiency study is done, where you have, where things are scored, so every time you do a new street sufficiency study, that street would receive a different score, the same thing would happen with the vehicle. So every year, the vehicle will be reviewed and given a score, and then that would determine when that vehicle would be requested to be replaced.
Okay. Are those scores going to be listed on here somewhere, or...
Yes, we will include the scores.
And also, too, when we bring the new vehicle for purchase, it'll be a nice tool for you guys to analyze, we'll have the scores in there every time you get a vehicle purchase request, and then we could go and debate the scores, and if you think the scores are accurate.
We'll debate.
It'll be quite exciting.
Is there a handicap system?
Possibly.
No, no, there's nothing. Just go.
Okay. Commuter parking lot fund, you know, we all know what the commuter parking lot is, not a lot of change in here, you know, some nominal decreases due to maintenance of building and grounds, and, you know, some electric costs.
Next.
Yeah, so over the, the last couple of years, you know, we, we've, you know, done some good contracts through electric, you know, the auctions through NYMEC, maintenance of buildings and grounds, the contractual services, you know, the building, you know, is, the first couple of years are a couple of issues, but we've gotten those resolved by and large, so that's why we're able to, to bring that maintenance of buildings and ground number down a little bit, due to some, some good fixes on the front end, and then I believe defer Mr. Ruback for some snow and ice control comments relative to the parking lot and the depot station.
Yes, I know some questions had arisen in regards to having a contractor come in and do the lot this year with some of the snowstorms we had, particularly the large snowstorm we had in February. Given the current situation and state of bidding, doing something at this point in the year was infeasible when we were looking at prices. Matt and I had gotten quotes earlier in the year, just to see, to gauge, and prices we were receiving now were three to four times higher than what we had received then, so we felt comfortable for the rest of the year being able to handle this in-house, but we're looking at next year contracting out above four inches of snow, to be able to handle this. But this year, it just didn't seem feasible, didn't seem a good cost benefit to the city to be able to do that.
Contracting out four inches of snow, or four of the snow, what was that last time?
Contracting, having maintenance done, plowing, salting, over four inches. So typically, that absorbs more of our staff's time and may not reach the service levels that, that we want to be at.
Hey, Roman.
Couple of questions. We seem to have a continual problem here with door handles, I see we have fifteen hundred dollars budgeted. I thought we were going to have some extra door handles always on stock, in stock, in case they break. Do we have them in stock, or we have to go buy them every time?
I would have to defer to Mr. Forrest on it.
Now, you say it was a special item, that's why we have to find it.
Yeah, the handles were quite difficult to come about, but we do keep a stock now. I think we have one or two backups. We haven't had an issue in quite some time.
Okay, and...
Yeah, I'll break tomorrow.
Second question was, we recently had that issue with the electric over there. Do we, are we going to need to do something there, or...
Yeah, that was an underground issue that was found, the contractor came out, corrected it, they indicated that it could be fine for another sixty years. If we chose to replace it, we could do that, it's perfectly fine and working now, there's no really accurate prediction on when it's going to break again. We did fix it, I think it was a nominal fee, about two to three thousand dollars. If we wanted to replace the whole line, that would be a more significant expenditure, but that would be up to you, certainly something we can budget for. Again, no guarantee on when it's going to break again, it could last fifty years, I don't know.
Unless there's no further questions, I'll move on to the next. So Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund, in reviewing the notes from the CIP meeting in January, there did not, didn't have any notes for any changes from the Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund, so as of right now, fiscal sixteen was as presented at the CIP meeting back in January. Under the Water and Sewer Operating Fund, so through here, we can see the four different divisions within the Water and Sewer Fund, you know, say a nominal increase of, you know, just over seventy-one thousand dollars on the water fund, you know, and we, I know we've talked about water rates a lot, and, you know, deficits and whatever, you know, the water fund this year through the budget process actually came in better than we had anticipated, just budgeting, you know, it's still showing a deficit, you know, but it was a narrower margin than we had initially anticipated when we were doing some of our pre-budget work, so, you know, that's definitely a good sign. You know, and then from earlier this evening, putting back the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into there will also, also help that out, so, you know, some, some good news in that regard, from a budgeting and a rate structure standpoint for, you know, when we come back around to it in the future, so. Just wanted to, just wanted to highlight this, some, just a little bit of good news from a budgeting standpoint for the, for the water fund, so. So, and each of these have their own, their own sheets, so we'll go into it. Utilities, the Utilities Division does have one expanded level item, it's the Water System Apprentice, and then a, a backfill position of a maintenance worker one due to that apprentice, effectively, you know, just by definition being a shadow, shadowing the, the water supply operator, you know, go to the next page. The commodities increased due to the cost of water through DuPage Water Commission, you know, we're all aware of those rate increases. Contractual, the bi-annual leak detection testing, last year, the slide said it decreased due to it not needing to be done, this year, it says it's an increase because it has to be done, so just every other year, it's going to bounce back and forth. And capital LA, the other equipment, there was some items last year that, other pieces of equipment that were purchased, not so this year, and then other depreciation and non-cash expense increasing. So field general questions on utilities, and then move into that apprentice position, unless there's any other questions. So the apprentice position, you know, there's always, you know, the, the talk, the comment from the DIAS, you know, cross-training, you know, succession planning, things of that nature. This, this sheet right here is it, in a nutshell. You know, the water system operator, at some, I don't know what his timetable is, but at some time, he's going to retire, he talks about it on a fairly regular basis, and, you know, in principle, that is not really a fully trained backup for him. So this position, while adding one body until that person retires, would allow the city to cross-train and have somebody in place when that person retires to, to slide into that position, and theoretically not have a loss of efficacy, loss of knowledge or ability to perform the job.
Should I have all the requirements necessary to take over when...
I believe he already has the licensing, I believe.
Licensing, I mean?
Yes.
Mayor?
Are we talking about, say, water operator, are we talking about the treatment plant?
Uh, the potable side, the clean water side.
The clean water side?
Correct.
Nothing yet on the other side.
And just, you know, it does say there's the, the backfill, the maintenance worker one, you know, so will be plus one, you know, for approximately a year, year and change, but when the current operator retires, then we'll go back down to the level that we're at now, so it'll just be a, you know, one-year increase balloon, just to, to get that person to be able to focus solely on, you know, that position, to train up on that position.
Like a true apprenticeship program.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Woods?
Make a motion to approve the water operator apprentice.
I'll second it.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Good, Brett.
Waste water division, you know, they, and a couple of the... Biggest ones in there are the outlay going up, there are, it's in the improvement line item, there's some pumps that need to be rebuilt and worked on in the wastewater line item, and then the inner fund, again, going back to our friend, the SURF Fund, before the vehicle purchases, were scattered throughout the water sewer fund, now we're just making one transfer through the wastewater division to the SURF Fund, to future fund the purchase of wastewater vehicles. Contractual increases due to some pretreatment requirements, commodities, largely utility costs, electric, natural gas. We are hopeful that, you know, after the upgrades to those systems go through, that those costs will moderate some, because they're not going to be running as much as they are now, but absent having a good date on that, you know, we could make a good estimate on that. Depreciation, again, the non-cash costs, and then the bond principal interest of the two thousand and twelve A bonds, again, those costs are now, those bonds are fully needed to be paid back, so those, those numbers are the full bore of those bonds being repaid in this current year budget.
Peter?
This is kind of going to wastewater and water. In here, we talked about, in the beginning of the book, it talked about the mains, and it said the expected useful life, and that the prospect is we may have to replace a large portion of the underground infrastructure. Are we taking, putting some money aside for that, or is that something we're just going to...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, every time we do a water main project through the CIP, that's addressing that issue as we're going along, you know, the South Cedar Montrose last year, you know, we had Mill Road a couple of years out, you know, so all the projects in the CIP are addressing that slowly but surely.
Okay, well, just in here, it just made it sound like it was all going to have to be done at once, I just want to make sure that we are with the CIP, making sure that we are...
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's a useful life, an estimated useful life, you know, a couple of years ago, the South Cedar Montrose really wasn't even on our radar, and then we had that summer, and it was at nine or ten breaks, and, you know, it jumped up to the top, you know, so we're trying to, to align them with the known roadway projects and stormwater projects, and, you know, to that extent, we're doing those as, as we go, but if we get one where there's a significant number of breaks on it, it, it may jump up, which is, if it comes out of nowhere. But, yeah, but by and large, we're trying to tie them to other projects, and only tear up the street, the ground, once, and address those as we go, so. Plant maintenance, biggest change in here is, is the capital. Again, last year, they had, I think it was one or two vehicles and some other equipment, and moving it back into the SURF, and there's no vehicles for the, the plant maintenance this year. And then maintenance and fuel costs dropped, the commodities and contractual line items, so really, really, again, pretty vanilla, pretty much the same as last year for the plant maintenance division. The plant ma, the, yeah, the tab says, just maintenance division, yeah. Yeah, I believe, unless there's a slight hiding in there, this will be the last one of the evening. Storm sewer maintenance, the storm sewer, there's no personnel costs, because the storm sewer maintenance division is the same gentleman that operated out of the Utilities Division, the clean water side. And again, just a decrease generally across the board, you know, some maintenance, fuel costs, vehicle maintenance, some of the vehicles have been replaced, and then kind of been getting on top of some of the, the hot-button storm sewer issues, and then also fixing some of the flooding problems around the town through the stormwater master plan has also helped to, to bring some of these costs down as well, as, as those older, more deteriorating systems are being replaced and modernized.
We're reaping the benefit of our good planning.
Correct.
Question for Ken.
Well, it's good to see it pays off.
Is there anything in there that we can... There's an awful lot of vegetation growth around the storm sewers. I don't know if you noticed, it's like a creeping, in Ward Four, there's quite a bit of it, and it's very green, and grows, and it holds debris, dams up the water from getting to the sewer. Is there anything we can use on the streets, or the...
You put up signs, right? That's why we do more, too.
Typically, you'll start to see vegetation come through on streets as, as they start to decay and as they start to break apart, particularly between curbs. There, I, I have seen sprays, I don't know communities that currently do that, though, so I don't know the level of labor it would require to do it, or what the cost would be associated with that.
It's like creeping Ben or something, or creeping Charlie, they call it. Maybe with this, add, add better this street sweeping thing, it'll keep it, keep it down, I don't know. Okay? Mr. Woods?
If that's the last one, I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second. Mr. Wilson?
There was a few amendments to it, I mean, so should we say, as amended?
We don't answer your questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as amended.
Second. I just want to see if Jeff's got a question.
No, no, I was just telling Brad we have to make sure we give you the sheet highlighting the amendments.
Any, any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion adjourned? Make a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion adjourned, we're going to meet a adjourn.